Board, we have a rather robust agenda this evening. First item on the list is the continued public hearing for 40 Locust Street, a special residential used townhouse well. Jim, can you bring us up to date on this?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So Bunge Brook on Locust Street has made some significant progress since the last time they have been before the board. As you may recall, at the last meeting, the applicant had a number of homework assignments in terms of updating their stormwater. We were waiting at that time for our peer review engineer, and since that time, they have provided some insights and updates in terms of stormwater. And I believe the applicant is prepared to respond. And you have a pack, you have a handout in your package this evening with some of his responses. In addition from stormwater, as you are aware, sewer has been confirmed, so no onsite package treatment, which is, I think, a positive for everyone. So sewer is being proposed running down reservoir. And obviously, as been notified to the applicant, you know, once that's run down, there will be a curb-to-curb pavement or repave of that road. And in the topic of sewer, we have met with the DPW. And I know one of, actually, one of our representatives from the board was able to be with us as well, just to go over kind of the ins and outs of sewer, of the sewer, and making sure that it's the best design it could. So I know DPW has offered comments regarding that. So I'm sure the applicant is prepared to speak to that as well. And then lastly, in terms of sidewalks, that was kind of an outstanding item from our last meeting. And I think the applicant is certainly prepared to speak to that.
Right, thank you. I'd like to turn it over to, I guess, at this point, BSC. Was the stormwater?
No, I'm sorry, BSC is not, not in this evening. They had a personal matter, but I know Jim Almonte from LDC is here, and they've had to, they've already prepared the responses.
Let me turn the meeting over to him.
Hey, can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Again, Jim Almonte, Registered Landscap Architect with Land Design Collaborative. So yes, we did prepare, we did receive a comment letter from, from BSC. And on October 24th, we have prepared a response letter to that. Let me just back up a second. So last week, we had conservation hearing, it was a productive hearing. We kind of went through that letter, item by item with BSC, and the commission kind of verbally responded to those comments. Since then, we have provided a written response to the comments. I don't know if you were able to receive that. We just provided that yesterday. So you do have a written response to those comments. I don't know, I don't, probably doesn't make sense to go through them item by item if BSC is not here, but we can touch on a couple of the important ones. And we've also provided a waiver request letter as well, as part of that package. And we are currently working on revising the site plans to reflect the changes that we've agreed to in the comment letter. So we're working on those now, working on some additional stormwater clogs. So we hope to have those in the next couple of days in preparation of the next hearing.
Can you tell us what has happened with the conservation?
So again, we basically use the last hearing as a working session to basically, to walk through those comments. I think they were, they were pleased with the verbal responses that we get, that we gave. We've continued the hearing with them, I believe, until December 8th.
Okay.
And that time, we hope to have revised plans in front of that commission as well as this, this board for the next hearing.
Anything else you need to add?
No, I think that's it. I mean, I, we can, we can kind of give you an update on the sidewalks. I know that was one of the outstanding issues. So we did have a meeting with, with DPW and with Jim and a few other members in town. And the applicant, who I believe is on, on the call tonight, has agreed to fund sidewalks, construction of sidewalks in other locations of town, in town. I know the DPW, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, had prepared a cost estimate for what it would cost to build a similar or an equivalent length of sidewalk, if we were to build sidewalk on the site, to fund that same amount elsewhere in town. And they came up with a number, and the applicant has agreed to provide that number. And he would like to do that based on, and this was actually a suggestion of the town to, to do this in a way where, once they close on, on a unit, they would provide a fraction of that cost of the sidewalk until the project is fully, fully constructed, constructed. That number will be fully funded at that point.
What's your timeframe for to complete this project? And I know basically, the economy could be difficult.
Yeah.
I could speak to that. I would say it's probably three years. This is Steve Unkasa speaking. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Steve. I think you broke up a little bit. Can you repeat what you?
This is Steve Unkasa. Can you hear me okay?
Barely.
Oh, sorry. We estimated the project would take about three years to complete the project.
Right, okay. So you're willing to fund the sidewalks in three years?
Yes. And we, we did agree to that number.
Okay.
So I just want to confirm that.
Okay. Just, just to dive into that a little bit more, so everyone's aware. So that's, that number was, as Jim had mentioned, designed based on a linear feat to linear feat of what was being proposed within the site. We had our peer review engineer analyze that cost, you know, from, from design permitting to construction, ended up being, I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's 147,000 and some odd dollars, I believe. And so we've done this before, the board has done this before with the townhouse development, where a check is made to the town to stabilize a fund such as this at closing. And as the chairman pointed out, yes, ultimately, those funds wouldn't be satisfied in total for three years perhaps. But as we know, you know, this, these things take some time anyway. So I, I think that's a, you know, I think it's a positive contribution. The sidewalk locations, I'm sure that's a lot of people's on their minds. That's not decided yet. That's certainly something that's up for discussion in terms of the general public and their, their suggestions. DPW and the Roads Committee certainly will be looking at that. Obviously, the thought is to stay in the neighborhood, you know, create a nexus to this new development, create a nexus to neighboring developments such as Reservoir Drive, and, you know, and other amenities or major corridors in the area. So that's certainly something up for discussion, doesn't have to be decided before the board or decided with this application, that it just be decided, you know, prior to obviously expending those funds.
Jim brings up a question. For this project, I know it's a short timeframe of three years. Do we need a performance bond?
So typically, with a private development, where we would not take over the roadways of any kind or anything like that, we typically don't do a performance bond because essentially, if, you know, the development stopped, we wouldn't come in and, and complete it. I think that, that discussion maybe had, if, if for some reason, infrastructure is not complete prior to occupancy. So, you know, typically, how it's, how it plays out is, prior to any occupancy of a residential unit, all of the primary infrastructure is completed. You know, with this being kind of a nestled, small village, you know, that certainly could come into play, and we could certainly have some language in a decision that contemplates that. If, yeah, if, you know, add occupancy, certain infrastructure or a central infrastructure isn't complete, then a performance bond should be established.
Should you have any idea on the, or could you come back to us in either the summer or January, and outline your phasing of this project? Over, over three years? With regard to infrastructure, wastewater, reservoir app, etc.?
We, we do not plan on, we do not plan on phasing the infrastructure itself. We would phrase the construction of the units, which would, I don't think would be of a high concern to the board, but the infrastructure itself, we would complete in one phase. It's, it's one access road in with a loop around. The water and sewer obviously have to be completed before we can get any occupancy permit, so we would, we would do all that work upfront. So we do not anticipate phasing of the roadway itself.
I'm thinking in particular, it's been a focal point for discussions for a while, the dealing with reservoir app. Is that going to be your initial, one of your initial phases?
I'm sorry, dealing with reservoir streets, is that what you said, sir? Well, that would be completed with the, with the installation of the sewer. And as far as the paving of the road itself, generally, we like to install that work and patch the roadway and then top coat it the following year. But that would be, if the, if the DPW wants us to do it the same year, we would, we would complete that the same year. So that would, we would follow the direction of the DPW, since it's a public way. I, that's, that's not a big part of this project, though.
Okay. But I, I appreciate that. But I know to the residents of reservoir, that is of, you know, keen interest to them.
We, we recognize the importance of it, and we will follow the direction of the town on that, however you'd like us to do that work.
That is appreciated. Jim, anything else before I ask other members of the board to?
No, that, that's it for really this evening. You know, the, obviously, as Jim Almonte mentioned, plan sets are to come, to be, you know, delivered shortly. So our peer review is going to take one more round of review of it. And, and we're in pretty good shape.
I'd like to turn it over to the board members. I have one last question. I had asked that you sit down with the residents of Reservoir, at Reservoir Avenue Road. Have you had a chance to do that yet?
We've had a few conversations outside the building after the meetings with a few of the residents. Other than that, we, we're available to do that, but I don't think it's, it has not happened yet, and I'm not sure if, if the residents want to initiate that or not.
Yeah. If I could, if I could just add?
May, may I, I believe Walter made it perfectly clear that he did want to speak with you. And for you to reach out to him, yes.
Okay, do I have his contact?
I, I was not present for that conversation.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking right now.
I'm sorry, this is Sean, Sean Wade from Reservoir Drive.
So if I could just add to that as well, to what Steve said, so we have had?
Hold on for a moment, please. I don't think we've opened up the public here.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I don't want to step on your toes, I just, you know, unfortunately, there are procedures. So unless anyone else on the board has any questions?
If I can just?
Open this to the public at this point in time. So Sean, you, the floor is yours.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, I just?
I understand, sir.
Correct things, yes. No, I, I just, I did want clarification when we said we were going to be working on the road curb to curb, and then the later discussion about sidewalks. So we have no intention of working on the sidewalk on Reservoir Drive as of right now.
Okay.
Okay, that's just a concern, just, I don't know how you'd replace the road without completely demolishing that sidewalk. So that's obviously a very big concern of everybody on the street.
I understand that.
So that's all, and we, and we have not been contacted. We very much, everybody on the street would very much like to speak with them, it'd be great.
So if I can just respond to that, as Steve mentioned, we had a number of conversations after the public hearings, you know, outside the building. And, you know, we're more than willing to meet with the residents. We asked them, you know, if they want to organize and have a meeting to reach out to Jim or somewhere else in town to coordinate that and set that up. So, you know, we obviously don't, don't have, you know, we're not privy to everybody who is interested in meeting, so it's?
I appreciate that.
Oh, sure. I, I must have misunderstood from Walter. I will reach out to him, and then we'll reach out to you.
Sean, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you reach out to your neighbors?
Yeah, absolutely.
On Reservoir Road and try to coordinate a type of meeting? I know it's still golf season for a little while. Is it feasible that we could have a meeting at Bunge Brook at the restaurant?
Yeah.
So I think what we could do is use the restaurant in Bunge Brook to hold that meeting for the neighbors and the applicant, and address those concerns. I also would like to the applicant sit down with DPW to outline the process for the neighbors fairly clearly and distinctly on what is expected of them, what is to be provided by the applicant in regards to hooking up to sewer and your gas and the, the waiving of the fee. You know, they're not obligated to do it, just, you know, answering those questions.
Sure.
So there's no, no miscommunication in the event someone does not show up to this projected meeting.
And just because I don't have his information, I would like to extend that invitation to Brian Rhodes as well, just because I do believe he maintains the cemetery that's right, touches reservoir as well. So it'd be nice to have him there as well.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, this is Brian Rhodes from 40 Locust Street. I actually had my hand raised earlier. I would also?
Yes, sir.
Say that again, sir?
I see your hand raised.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm Brian Rhodes, I'm near Butter to the northern side of the golf course. And I also had wanted to meet with Land Design, because I've been zooming for the meetings, I did not know there was any conversations after the meetings. So when there is a meeting, I would like to be invited, because I'm not in contact with anybody from Reservoir Road. So I would look forward to that opportunity to speak with Land Design. And I do appreciate the fact that they have been taking comments and they're adjusting their plans towards some of what the neighbors' concerns are. So it's good to see progress on their part, and we look forward to more progress.
Are you the gentleman that is adjacent to the parking lot?
Correct, sir, I am.
And you've, you've been fairly active in the zooming meetings, if I recall?
Yeah, I've been to every planning board and every conservation committee meeting. And, you know, they appear they are listening to our comments, and they're making progress. And I think a meeting in person would be very helpful to get everybody totally on the same page, because I'm sure they want to move this along. And all the Butters and everybody on Reservoir Road probably wants to know exactly what the plans are.
I'm in agreement, and I think the board is in agreement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? So Jim, I think at this point, we have a little bit of homework to do. We need to have a meeting, we have new plans to be set up. I'm thinking perhaps pushing it to the first meeting in January, since we're only having one meeting in December.
Yeah, I think, you know, we certainly could finalize quite a bit of stuff. You're, you're right, I mean, there are also holidays in between here. So, yeah, if you wanted to move it to the January meeting, I'm just trying to look up the date of January. Sorry.
So I would, I would enter into a motion for continued public hearing to 13th of January. Five seconds. All in favor of motions on the floor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, I'm stating the motion passes unanimously. And again, we'd be real nice, we'd get, obviously, like to have a couple of dates so we get this meeting done, hopefully in December, so we can digest everything when they're back here on the 13th.
So just, just a question, so we'll wait to hear from Jim then? I assume the Butters would reach out to Jim and then coordinate that?
I think some of the Butters will reach out amongst themselves. The owner has made his facility available. So I think if we offer two potential dates, I may make it convenient for more people to attend, as opposed to going to a specific date. And if there are any questions, you know, Jim can coordinate it. But I think, you know, we have the place, we know when it has to be done by. And so I think between the applicant and the neighbors, we can reach out to people. And if I'm not mistaken, you can obtain a mailing list of the people on Reservoir Road. Some of those people, if I recall, were not within the 300 feet of the project, but nonetheless, living on Reservoir Road, with the impact, the impact that they should be notified.
This is Steve Unkasa, the applicant. I guess I'm not sure at this point right now how we're going to coordinate that meeting with the neighbors. Are we going to be notified from Jim? Are we going to be trying to notify the neighbors directly? I'm not sure how to proceed.
And what's the best way to facilitate this?
Yeah, no problem, I can, I'm happy to facilitate. Jim Almonte, if you want to give me a couple of dates and times that you guys could be down there, and then for anybody in the general public who wants to attend, just send me a quick email to my, you know, to the work email, right on the town's website, on the planning board, planning department. Or you can reach out to Amy Sutherland also in the planning office, and she can notify me. And once I have, you know, please reach out fairly soon. And once I have some dates and times, I'll be certain to share those, and we can see if we can get that coordinated.
Just as a point of clarification to the applicant and the neighbors, we will not be participating in this meeting. This is between the neighbors and the applicant, and we'll just remove ourselves from that process and then wait to hear the results. We don't want to sway anything at the meeting. We want to make this meeting as productive as possible. So thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Next on the agenda is the continued public hearing. So now we need to look at continued public hearing for 152 Depot Street. Jim, can you bring us up to speed? Tonight's topic is the results of, if I'm not mistaken, the traffic studies?
Right, so, so this evening, 152 Depot Street, making progress in terms of reviewing the, the plan sets and getting into, start getting into the details here. So tonight, as the board had recommended at the last meeting, was to prepare for response to the traffic study that was conducted. As you may recall, the traffic study was submitted with both 148 and 152 Depot Street that has since been amended to reflect 152 Depot Street only, as 148 has been withdrawn. The town has procured MDM to assist us with reviewing the traffic study and, and the impacts it may cause in the, in the surrounding area. I see Dan Mills on, on the line, who's our, the board's peer review engineer, who's, you know, provided the board with a response, an initial response to start the discussion. I know the applicant has, had an opportunity to take a quick look at it at least. So this evening would be preferably to go through the traffic analysis and peer review response. And, and just as a notification to the board and the general public, stormwater is being reviewed, and the goal for, you know, stormwater, drainage, environmental concerns, et cetera, the anticipation is at the next meeting to start tackling those. Tonight focusing on traffic.
Thank you. Turn it over to the applicant.
So, good evening. So if you like, Mr. Chairman, we have Sean Kelly, our traffic engineer, here with us today, and we can give a, an overview of the study that was prepared, or if you prefer, we can talk through some of the comments from, from MDM, it's whatever.
What I'd like to do, because of the importance of this, and the neighbors articulating their concern about traffic, they gave us an overview?
Sure.
It'd be greatly appreciated. Do they want to take their screen over?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the slides back up, they disappeared.
For the people on my left, you may want to move, so you better view this. It might be a little awkward if you sit. Sure.
Just, I'll move back.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board. For the record, my name is Sean Kelly, traffic engineer with the Nassan Associates. On behalf of the project team, thank you for having us before you tonight. If it pleases, what I would like to do is I'll take a few minutes to walk through a traffic study, how it was conducted, what I find these were, what our recommendations are, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of members of the board or the audience by head. So the first slide is pretty straightforward, just site location map oriented, so again, the project is a 211,000 square foot warehouse facility located on the western side of Depot Street. Depot Street is a local roadway with your stations in town of Bellham, runs in the general northwest-southeast orientation, between Hartford out into the north, where there's six of Grove Streets, and then down to North Bay Street, 126 to the south, opposite the Dairy Creek driveway. We conducted the study in accordance with all state industry guidelines. The first stage, we went out, did an assessment of existing traffic and safety conditions. We went out and did traffic counts to look at the volume of traffic that's out there today, both on a daily basis as well as peak hour. When you talk about the peak hours for a project like this, what we're typically looking at is your seven to nine in the morning, and your four to six in the evening. Those are your commuter peaks, and the volumes are highest, and when the generation facility is typically highest as well. We drove to, onto Depot Street. Depot Street today carries about 1,730 cars over the course of 24 hours weekday. Peak hour flows range anywhere from about 110 to 140 vehicles per hour. The intersections that we looked at as part of our study were the, you know, really The intersections that we looked at as part of our study were the, you know, really the gateways to Depot Streets from the north at Hartford Avenue, and the south at Route 126. And we also looked at Silverstein Way, which provides access to Dunk and Donuts facility immediately south of us. Again, we looked at the seven to nine in the morning and also four to six in the evening. We looked at the vehicle speeds. Depot Street is a 35 mile an hour road. What we did see is that people out there typically are traveling above the speed limit. The average speeds range anywhere from 37 to 39 miles an hour. But what we look at is what we call the 85 percentile speed, which is used for design purposes. And that speed is more in the order of about 44 to 45 miles an hour, about 10 miles over the speed limit. Look at the safety characteristics in terms of the number of crashes that have occurred out here. Most of the locations were below the state average, and none of them were designated on Mass Highway's high crash rate intersection list. However, we did note that the intersection of 126 is above the state average today, independent of the project. The next thing that we do is we take the volumes that we collect, then we adjust them upwards. We project out seven years in the future to the year 2028, and that's the state guideline. Take into account full background growth, we adjust by a 1% per year growth in traffic, independent of any project. And we also include traffic associated with other area developments, which based on discussions with the planning department, there are some warehouse projects as well as residential projects on Mechanic Street that will have some influence on traffic. We've incorporated those in. With respect to the, the project itself, we rely on data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ITE. And what the ITE has done for decades is they've established a database where they go to existing facilities, whether it's a retail facility, office facility, residential, in this case warehouses is appropriate, and they do traffic counts. And then based on those counts, they establish rates that they'll let you project for a certain size facility, how much traffic you can get during peak hours on a daily basis. And then also the composition of that traffic, with the warehouse use, really, it's passenger vehicles or trucks. And what the data shows is that for a facility of this size, you're typically looking at about 380 daily trips. That's 190 in, 190 out. On a daily basis, about two-thirds of those trips, about 250 are passenger trips. Those are employees arriving in the morning, leaving in the evening, and then also trips throughout the day. And then about 63 of those trips are truck trips. So, you'll typically see about 60 trucks coming in and about 60 trucks leaving for a facility of this type. During the peak hours, which is the, you know, when commuter traffic is heaviest, you're looking at about 51 trips in the morning and 53 trips in the evening. The bulk of these are employees coming and going to work. You know, the truck trips are anywhere about four to six total trips during those peak hours. Most of the activity that warehouses generate with respect to trucks occurs between the morning and evening commuter peak throughout the day. You don't see a lot of activity at night. Once you get past seven or eight at night, you might see one trip an hour in terms of trucks. In many of those hours, really, you don't see any. But, but the bulk of it is to go up the course of the midday and early afternoon. We looked at the impact in terms of the traffic this generates, and then typically, you know, we're looking at about a 1%, 2% increase in traffic, 2.5% in some instances. But it's not a huge increase based on the level of traffic that's there today at the gateway intersections. We did, as part of our assessment, you know, take a close look at the intersection of Hartford Avenue and Grove Street with Depot Street. And this intersection today operates at level service F, independent of any projects or independent of any growth. And what that means is that people that are trying to turn off Depot Street or turn off Grove Street today at the stop sign controlled intersection experience long delays. Typically, you're waiting for in excess of 50 seconds, almost a minute, maybe more, to get off the intersections. And during peak hours, you can see vehicles do queue up, particularly on Grove Street coming southbound. We've looked at what we call warrant analyses, where we do counts throughout the day for 12 hours. And this intersection today, independent of this project, you know, does meet some warrants that justify the installation of a traffic signal. The peak hour warrants, and that's the volumes during the busiest hours the highest. And then that also means what's known as a four-hour warrant, where over four hours of the busiest hours today, the volumes are there as well. When you account for growth in traffic from other projects that are already in the pipeline, as well as this project, there'll actually even be another warrant called the eight-hour warrant. So, the signal today is justified, and certainly when the additional traffic associated, not only with this project, but with everything else going on, Mechanic Street comes online, it'll be even more justified. We come up with a mitigation plan, and really, there's, there's three main components. The first is the site access, you know, ensuring it's designed in accordance with all industry guidelines relative to pavement marking, signage, geometry, to ensure you can accommodate the truck traffic for those approaching up to other lanes and things of that nature. The second is a TDM plan, which is transportation demand management, which is a host of initiatives, try to get people to carpool, you know, not drive alone to work. And then really, the biggest mitigation component that the client is committed to is the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Hartford Avenue, Grove and Depot. Again, our, our increase in traffic at this location during the busiest hours of the day is about a 1.5 to 2% increase. So, you know, in terms of the overall volumes there, this project really is, quite frankly, a drop in the bucket. But as far as the mitigation goes, I know we've, we had priced out that a traffic signal will be somewhere in the order of $175,000 to $200,000. And I believe that the applicant is committed to putting in a quarter of a million, $250,000 towards a traffic light at that location to improve operations. And as I pointed out, you know, it's a level service F today, and it will be a level service F in whether this project advances or not. But with the traffic signal in place, the operations are improved to a level service B. So, it's a, it's a very significant improvement, not only from an operations standpoint, but also from a safety perspective, where vehicles coming off the side streets, Grove or Depot, will get a green light now and not have to make the stop sign control maneuver, which is somewhat difficult because the Russell movement site lasts at that location. So, that, you know, in a nutshell, is really all of what we've done. Again, it's a, you know, the project in terms of the peak hour generation, it's a little less than a vehicle permitted, about 50 to 57s. In terms of the increase relative to what's open today, it's about a 1% to 2% increase. And then, you know, and then developed, you know, mitigation plan, again, you know, quarter million dollars towards that intersection. We'll put a traffic light in, which will enhance safety and operations, you know, beyond what you would have today, even if this project didn't move forward. That's really all I have for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions of members of the board or the audience by head.
We have, we have.
No, no, I'm, I'm always.
No, I'm just behind you.
What did you observe from seven to nine, and what was it, four to six?
Four to six.
Existing traffic there today?
Well, on Depot Street, in the morning, it's about 110 vehicles per hour. And then in the evening, it's about 140 vehicles an hour traveling on the board.
Doug, did you notice any trucks back inside the roads? I didn't hear any of that.
When we did our accounts, we really focused on the intersection itself. Like, I do understand that there's some of the used, have had cars, trucks parked on the side of the border. Certainly not something we're proposing to have that occurs part of this meeting.
I understand.
But we do understand that that is issued.
Okay, thank you. With regard to the early departures of these kinds of facilities typically.
Sure.
Given the neighborhood in which there are other facilities that also have early departures, how does that look in terms of, you know, if a lot of these trucks are exiting pre-peak hours?
Yeah, I mean, typically, and if we have a follow-up, we do the response to MDM, we can certainly give it to you. But, but the bulk of the truck activity, you know, if we're showing during the peak hours that we're in the four to six range, typically, when you get before that, at six o'clock, it's actually at that, around that level or lower. The real spikes typically are your 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, you know, noon, one, two in the afternoon. And I can bring in a bar chart that shows that, what it really shows is that it plateaus in the early morning and late evening, you know, and then it's really during the midday that you see the bulk of the truck activity. And it's about, you know, a total of 60, 60 trucks coming and 60 trucks leaving. So, that's over the course of, you know, typically, say it's a 12-hour span, you're looking at on average about five, you know, and then really, during the midday, you might see seven, eight, nine, 10. And then as you kind of shed down towards the earlier, later hours, it might be more in the four or six range that's showing here.
Okay. In, in terms of turning movements out of the facility, I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect a lot of trucks would turn left.
Correct.
To go up to 126 and then.
And then catch 195 that way.
Right. In, in terms of making that turn, the, the trucks would cross, would cross Depot Street essentially, or at least cross that oncoming traffic to get in.
That's right.
What? Do you see any impact with regard to those trucks crossing and peeling traffic going in both?
Well, what we do is, we, we have to identify with the, based on prevailing travel speeds, you know, what the required site distance is, that we don't, we have a situation where there is an unsafe conflict. So, what, even with the higher, you know, 44 mile an hour travel speeds, what we show is that we have excess of 600 feet. And the sight lines over there are excellent, you know, it's a straight tangent section, north and south. So, vehicles will be able to make that move to a safe man without worrying about conflict with approaching traffic from the north and south.
Okay.
As far as lanes going in the sites, do you see any changes in the lanes right now?
No, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, I know it's a sensitive issue with the neighbors, but, but Depot Street's a pretty quiet road. You know, 100, 100 cars an hour might seem like a big number, but when you, when you break it down over 60 minutes, you know, you're basically saying, you know, two cars a minute on that road, which isn't a huge number. So, we don't see any need to do anything with respect to any additional turning lanes or, you know, widening the driveway itself. We're modeling for one lane approach, you know, that anyone wants to go left or right would be the same lane. And we're still showing it's a, you know, level service B movement. So, we're not closing any widening on Depot or even having two lanes in the site, you know, one lane is sufficient for the line.
Maybe, so it's the, I'm sorry, it's the middle computer making this sound? Not the, not the applicant computer, the board computer?
Hey, maybe you might want to, the applicant computer, if you want to hit the keyboard mute. You see it right there on the top, there's a little flash through the mic, you might be, that might help. And also, the, the iPad on that table, you might just want to cut off.
I think that's already off. All right, try that.
Also, Amy, there's no video on the public access.
Sorry.
So, the, so you focused on three, three intersections, one was Dunk and Donuts next door, right? Did you look at, what did you see there as far as being interfered with your entrance and conflicts with your entrance with trucks on both sites coming in and out?
Well, I, I think it's, I mean, certainly we look at the driveway separation. I know, I know one of the promises the period consultant had was to show templates, so we can, we can show temple paths and show that the trucks can both make maneuvers without conflicts in terms of entering and exiting. But one thing I think, you know, was, was worth noting is that when we looked at the volumes of the facility next door, they weren't particularly high. I mean, in the, in the morning peak hour, you had, you know, 23 vehicles entering and then 10 exiting. So, you know, we're in the.
23 and 10.
At Dunk and Donuts, right. And then in the evening, peak hour was a little higher, you had 17 coming in and, and 37 going out. So, it was more in the, you know, what it's 55 range set. But those numbers are aligned very well with the numbers that we're expecting at the facility next door with permits, so they, they drive, you know.
And there's a third some down there too. Best buy that's down there too. Do you see any conflicts with those three in a row?
I mean, we can, we can provide the templates, but certainly, you know, there's adequate separation between the driveways that they can, these vehicles can make those maneuvers without crisscrossing paths. But what we will provide that is that this is exhibited there.
Okay. About the focus to the north, how about to the south with Dairy Queen, any issues down there?
Well, the, the primary movement at that intersection that we're adding to really is that it's the right-hand turn. And I don't think people are going to travel, you know, south of Depot Street to make the left-hand turn to go back up 126 to Hartford. If you go to Hartford, you're probably going to make a left out of the site, do it that way. So, you know, certainly there were some delays for people making the left off Depot because you have to find a gap in traffic, both northbound and southbound. But the right turn movement, it works fairly well. I mean, I think it was a level service, you know, B or C movement, but there aren't long delays there. So, that's, that's really where, you know, we can have a decrease in traffic. So, you know, there are some delays when you want to turn left, but it's not a movement that we expect we're going to be adding traffic to, unless, you know, someone is looking for a destination on that stretch of 126. For the most part, if you're going to go to Hartford, we expect they're going to make a left out of the driveway, or at Depot Street, do it that way, especially if there's a traffic light there that facilitates that movement to get eastbound on Hartford Avenue.
Did you, have you had a chance to see the peer review yet?
I got it say at like 3:30. I scanned it, but I have not given any, you know, response.
Because I think there was easier today. I don't know what we were planning on presenting, but there's. Yeah, there's probably some issues there on both sides that.
Sure.
That came out with them, so.
Yep.
Think that I'll leave it at that for now.
Jerry. Um, regarding the traffic signal, that portion of Hartford Avenue, it's not under DOT jurisdiction.
Correct. No, this is town jurisdiction.
So, how does the permitting work for that traffic signal? Is it, will DOT have to review that? Is it going to be all based on the town?
I mean, it's where it's, where it's not a DOT intersection, we typically wouldn't have any involvement in it. You know, we prepare design plans or whoever does the design, we submit to the town. Typically, you'd have DVW review it, and they may request that a peer review consultant gets brought on board to give a secondary review, such as FDM. But DOT would have to involve that because it's out of the jurisdiction.
Okay. And then, I guess regarding the estimate, I think I heard you just say you're thinking to construct that signal, it's going to be around $175,000 to $200,000 is your guess.
Yeah, based on our experience in this type of situations, correct.
All right. Does that, that includes construction? Does it include permitting or that sort of stuff? Or is it just really the construction of the signal?
That's more of the physical cost, correct? I mean, the development certainly bear an additional cost in terms of the permitting effort at the site.
All right. So, D, would you be willing to provide a more detailed estimate on what exactly is included, what you think would be included, sort of $175,000 to $200,000 range?
Yeah, it gives a whole breakdown in terms of mast arms, signal posts.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, sir, while the total cost between 150 and 175, you're committed to a sum of 250?
Correct. Quarter million was the.
Yeah, we'd commit up to that amount, for instance, if there was something that came in more, you submit the estimate.
Okay.
And that way, it's a buffer.
Okay, I'd like to get back to that in a minute, Mike. Just keep that in the back of your mind for a moment.
Yeah. And then as far as a permitting timeframe.
Sure.
Do you know, basically, from the time that the design engineer says gets the go-ahead to when this signal is constructed, do you know what, do you have an estimate of a timeframe that that would take?
To design or to build it?
To, from design to build.
I mean, when you, I mean, when you, when you're doing a mass DOT product, typically you have three submissions, and, you know, there's, there's, we obviously rule of thought is it's a three-month process for every submission, so it's nine months.
Yeah.
You know, when it's, where it's a town project, and, you know, you may have a consultant that streamlined the review process, it wouldn't take necessarily a full two months to review design plans. It could be a, could be a smaller window, it could be a six-month window set. And then, you know, it's tough to say in terms of the construction timeline, a lot, you know, delays now are just getting the steel, the mast arms to actually put them up. So, it's, it's tough to say, but I would say, you're at least a few months now of construction. And then, and then really, it's how quickly we get the equipment and that to put it up.
Gotcha.
Link Street of the Year.
Yeah, well, I'm just, just thinking in the back of my mind, I know that this is not DOT jurisdiction, but anytime you're doing any work in a roadway, it always spirals into, okay, we're doing signal. All right, now it's, we need to upgrade drainage, we need ADA transitions or brands or something. So, I would, it would be nice to hear any preliminary comments from the DPW director, anyone for that matter, on this.
I think there, the peer review addresses some of those additional concerns.
Okay.
Um, I was hoping to get some more clarity on the ITE estimates.
Sure.
So, this is an estimate for a typical warehouse of this size. Is, is it a national estimate, or are there any regional variations, like density taken into account?
It's, it's a national standard, and it's based on square footage. It's, quite frankly, it's the, it's the requirement of what we have to use for data based on mass DOT. It's also for master's fireball, so they will add that to the data. I will say that, you know, there are other warehouse uses that generate more traffic. And I know that the town is sensitive to that, when you give it the traffic there and so on and so forth. So, we actually did a sensitivity analysis. We looked at the project, assuming it was a, you know, an Amazon-type facility, which would have a lot more traffic. And even with that additional traffic, you know, the traffic signal that we're proposing to build, we still have the capacity to accommodate that level of traffic as well. So, where we're expecting is going to be a typical warehouse that generates, you know, similar to what you see at Dunk and Donuts next door. But if it were, you know, a more higher-demand facility, if you will, the mitigation measures would be proposed, you know, have enough capacity in it to accommodate that demand if it exists.
So, how much additional traffic, in addition to that, would a high-demand use generate?
Sure, it's, it's somewhere in the order of, you know, in the, in the morning, you'll have about another 130 trips. So, I figure you have, you know, 60 in the north and south, you know, split. And then evening, it's about 200 additional trips, you know, about 100 more in north and south.
Okay. And then, do you know when the last time the ITE estimates were updated? Okay. And then do you know when the last time the ITE estimates were updated?
Both maybe three weeks ago, we got the new manuals. And I, I will say that when we did this study, um, the manuals weren't in yet. So we used the tenth edition of the eleven. I have reviewed the eleven editions for general warehouse and they're, they're within a, a trip or two, it's a very good.
And they're updated annually or is it?
No, it's, it's more of a saying they're averaging maybe every, every five, three to five years in that range.
Okay.
Coming close, coming closer to five.
A lot has changed in three to five years.
Right. And, and this manual is, again, it's, it's just off the shelf, but the raise.
And those, those estimates are from, they've gone out and done those recently.
Additional, correct. So what they do, what they typically do is that it's, it was a use that has seen major changes in how they operate. You know, for instance, uh, before the, you know, online banking became a, a major, you know, they had, they had older bank rates and what they did is they just kind of scrub those for the database because they're no longer applicable. But I'm certain that there's probably new warehouse data that since the last edition that's been incorporated because there was some minor adjustment in the rates, but it was a very, very small adjustment.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of questions. You've talked about peak hours during the day. I know it's a point of concern. We now realize the strong possibility or likelihood that this will be a twenty-four-hour average. How does that change the numbers?
Um, it, it, it really doesn't because the ITE data, you know, presumes that, that these facilities do generate traffic over the course of a twenty-four-hour day. Um, again, I can, what we do are, are response, I'll, I'll put together a, you know, I've got that for the warehouse uses, a kind of a bar chart that shows how that, how that those trips work. And you will see some trips, you know, typically it's in the order of, you know, two to three trips. There might be one truck and one employee, a tenant at night, eleven at night. But there aren't, you know, you, you're real, the real volume of traffic these things generate is between the, your morning commute peak, your evening peak, where you get the bulk of the truck traffic. And then August, you get the employees. Uh, but they do, they do generate at night and the ITE data, you know, certainly accounts for that distribution.
You mentioned the fact that your numbers are conservative in nature. When you first started, I believe. Do you, you look at it, you look at somewhat of like a worst-case scenario?
Right. Well, what we, what we typically, exactly. So the, the framework behind these studies is we do the counts for, you know, seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the evening. And then in that two-hour period, we identify the consecutive four fifteen-minute intervals. That's the, the heaviest busiest hour. And then we presume that the volumes when this facility is peaking would also fall within that hour. So you're already assuming that they're, it's a simultaneous speed. But then we also account for increases in traffic, you know, just through background growth, we account for all the developments. So at the end of the day, you know, what the traffic that would kind of certainly bumped up to, to reflect growth. And then we'd also assume that whenever traffic is busiest, will be when the facility is busiest during those peak hours.
What would it entail to look at the impact? Of best buy. Another turning access, move to Dunkin' Donuts.
Yep.
Get another intersection.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly could. I mean, it's, you said the impact, just to look at what the, the traffic activity is at the facility.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we could look at that, but I, but I'll say, you know, the, the volumes that we collected through the H to the road to would include best buy's lines they sent, they generated today. So we do know that out of those hundred and ten to, you know, a hundred and forty vehicles per hour that are on the corridor, that includes best buy's traffic if they're, they're currently operational. So we have it, it is captured. Um, but I will say that, you know, given, given that there's only a hundred and ten to a hundred and forty, which is, you know, two cars a minute on the corridor. Without even doing the counts or running the analyses, I could say with a, with a pretty, you know, strong degree of certainty that the best buy driveway will, will have similar operations to what we're projecting, you know, what Dunkin' Donuts has. Which is in the level service D range, you know, they, it's not a long way, but we can, we can look at that.
Unfortunately, the best buy property is not similar in scope to, um, what this property's proposed and what Dunkin' Donuts does. Uh, it's my understanding, I mean, from the applicants, that they plan to have all their vehicles on-site. Uh, so that they, they, they're not parking in the street. Is that correct assumption?
Correct. Um, all, we have the adequate driveway lengths such that any truck entering the site can get into the site. And there will be no queuing on depot street, which from what we understand is the issue that's been happening, particularly with the best buy. Our facility has the driveway to not have that happen.
Based on a walkthrough of last week, although I weren't, wasn't doing big hours at all. But the queuing, we, we're not seeing it happening at Dunkin' Donuts. So whatever their new initials are there. So the, the concern is, um, the queuing of traffic on, um, by best buy.
Sure.
Um, there are, um, videos available that, that show that. I know you're going to hear in a few minutes, we're going to open it up to the public, but, um. We may have to re- revisit that.
Sure. No, I, I, I understand. I understand the point. I mean, our design is not intended to replicate what's going on there.
And then what would it take to update your numbers to reflect the new manual numbers?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be much at all. I mean, I, I literally suspect that if we're showing fifty-one to fifty-seven trips now, usually in the manual, maybe it goes to fifty, fifty to fifty-eight in that range. But it was, you know, we, we, we done, as you're probably well aware, there's a lot of warehouse development currently, you know, the pipeline, not only this community, but other communities.
Yes.
I know we looked at it recently for a different project of the race work, I think we were talking about, they may be off by one percent, but they're very close.
Are you, you do this all over, correct?
Uh, yeah, everywhere in New England.
Okay. I have one more question. I guess, yeah.
So you just, you discussed a sensitivity analysis where you took a, a higher use.
Right.
And applied it to your numbers. Um, I think what we had discussed previously was. Um, since we don't know who the occupant or tenant might be, that we assume the very worst in our analysis and have our peer review. Then look at the highest potential possible.
Right.
Those, the numbers that we are discussing tonight, those are not.
No.
I think that in addition to. We need to look at the worst-case scenario.
And we did. We provided that as part of the assessment.
Okay.
And certainly, if there's no traffic light at, at road at Hartford, you know, those numbers would make the intersection significantly worse. But with the traffic light there, uh, you know, the, the capacity that you need to go process, not only what's there today, but even the traffic that will be generated. There was a second Amazon facility, for instance, the capacity will still be there, uh, but, but we don't expect it to be at that level. We think it will be more similar to what's next door, but our analysis does provide that. We can, I know MDM did ask for some additional backup in terms of how we distributed the trips and the lines. So we can, we can provide that to them as well. I appreciate that.
So you, you've not looked at worst-case scenario?
No, we have.
Okay.
Sure. The design of the building, what makes? The design of the buildings, you're talking that this is not a worst-case scenario. What is the design of the building that would lead us, I know we want to be worst-case scenario in the numbers, but what, what about this building? I see truck bays all the way up and down one side. What would be the design difference?
Much, much bigger building, much taller building.
Bigger and taller, but for this size building, this is, this, what's the difference? Because the maximum, he's talking about, we're not using conservative numbers here. We're using better numbers than worst case. So.
So I'm not sure I follow your question.
Is, is there a design feature of this building that would, you would change if you were going to the bigger building with this size building?
With, oh, with this.
With this size building.
Typically, no, because it's usually a much bigger building. So where I, to put it respectfully, I'm permitting millions of buildings, but now they're that type of building you're talking about. They're much, much larger than this and they're much taller because they've got a lot more automation and sorting and, and that sort of thing. So this building really doesn't support that. However, based on the request of the board, that's why we ran the sensitivity analysis. And, and what we wanted to prove was that, hey, even though we're not generating the, the traffic that warrants it, we're going to update the signal. And by the way, even if this building did operate under that higher traffic, the signal still works. So we're not all of a sudden putting the signal that wouldn't work if something different comes in there.
So did I hear mechanical inside? Is your design mechanically inside? I'm trying to think, this size building.
Yeah.
Same height, same size. What would be the difference on a building that you would assume would be a higher level of number of trucks?
It's the user.
It's the user, right?
Yeah.
So do we know, do we know who the targeted user is or the segment?
No, but when you get to that high sort, you're perfect from the high sort facilities, they're, they're bigger buildings, right? And they have a, they have a, they're a taller building, right? So you're getting more goods in there, they're direct and it's.
Yeah, there's a limit for how much throughput you can get through a building.
That's not a certain.
That's a certain height. You need to get to forty-foot clears, fifty-foot clears, get more product through.
Your zoning does not allow that. So even if we wanted to go higher, you can't, you know, zoning, you know, precludes you from, from doing that. So we just literally ran those numbers, even though there's no way that it's going to be that, that facility.
Okay, then that's, that's my point. I, I don't want to have people confused. When we talk about your numbers are conservative. The people in the audience, we're looking at worst-case scenario. Is that correct?
We, we, well.
I don't, I don't want them to think we love all the numbers.
No, I mean, we.
We're being conservative. You're looking at potentially what could happen under certain scenarios with this size building and maxing out.
We ran two scenarios. We ran, what the scenario is.
Yeah.
Per your request, we then ran the higher worst-case scenario, which we don't think the building.
Yeah.
We ran that and provided the, the numbers for that to show that the mitigation that we proposed would still work under that scenario and correctly.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so I just want everyone to know, we are at the end.
Yes, we, we've run it as what we expect it's going to be, which is a typical warehouse and also as the high sort facility warehouse, where you'd have that additional hundred, two hundred trips.
And then I think what numbers do these reflect?
This, these numbers here are the, the typical warehouse.
Okay.
But they, if you, but if you went again, and again, the difference is that, you know, you're looking at both fifty-five trips to the peaks and that we more than were of a hundred and eighty to two hundred fifty.
What I would like to do is have a, um, trip generation of the worst-case scenario.
Right. We, we did that. I mean, I want to make it clear that we, we did that.
These numbers aren't reflected.
No, no, because it's in the reports that were submitted. It just wasn't on the board he's presenting to. It's in the report that was submitted and.
For our next presentation, we have those numbers on the board.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. This would have been better for the neighbors. Cause I'm sure you're, you're, you're going to get several questions, just maybe on that. Anything, anyone from the members report, turn around as a public. Jim, do you want to talk about anything?
No, I would just mention that Dan Mills is here from MDM and might want to just go real quick down, just come some high-level, uh, things that he pointed out in his peer review response. Obviously, um, you know, the applicant hasn't had an opportunity to really bet that, uh, so, you know, we don't, we just, doesn't need a back and forth. But just for the board and the public's understanding, some, maybe some high-level, um, opportunities for Dan to point out.
Uh, Mr. Mills, I hate, hate to put you in the spot, having just received your report, but can you give us an overview?
I sure can. Good evening. My name is Dan Mills, Principal Traffic Engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants in Marlboro. Uh, we did have an opportunity to review the traffic impact assessment provided by the applicant. Uh, we were retained by the town, uh, for that purpose. Uh, we were initially provided with the, um, uh, traffic assessment that included a larger project and understand that that is, uh, been withdrawn. And we're looking at just the one fifty-two depot street project. The presentation tonight was pretty much spot-on with what we saw in the traffic study and most of your comments were actually spot-on as well. We did have some, uh, need some clarifications, um, requested some supporting, additional supporting information to the traffic study. Uh, which you may have noticed in your scan of our peer review. Um, in general, um, you know, crash, crash data was reviewed. Site distance was reviewed, mitigation level of service. Um, so the standard criteria was met by the traffic report. The highlighting comments I would have is that, um, the depot at North Main Street intersection does experience a higher crash rate. While we, we understand that the majority of traffic is not going to turn left down at that location, uh, out onto North Main Street. There was some concern that the, if, if there was a more concerned, uh, more higher generating use of vehicles turning left into, um, depot street may, may cause further delays. And possibly tie up that storage lane, um, that's on North Main Street. So we, you'll notice in the later in the study, we recommend a monitoring period and, um, any suggestions for, um, improvements at that location. Since, um, the mitigation was really focused on the, the depot street, Hartford Avenue intersection. They didn't know about the site distance. Um, depot street is a pretty straight, uh, level roadway. Uh, I believe it was mentioned that there was about, uh, greater than six hundred feet of site distance. It's customary to provide a, uh, those dimensions in what we call site triangles at the driveway on a plan. Just to make sure that, um, any vegetation, uh, natural or proposed landscaping, um, any ornamental fences, walls, um, things, signage. Things of that nature stay out of that area so that we could, that, that clearing and visibility can be maintained throughout the life of the, uh, the building. The warrant analysis, um, for the traffic signal, um, it's generally met, um, under today's conditions. Certainly is, uh, met in the future with additional growth along the, the corridor and with a more intense use of the building. Um, we had worked on a project in two thousand nine for the town and at that time we had recommended left turn lanes, um, on Hartford Avenue itself. Uh, it's, it's unclear whether that's being proposed as part of this plan. Um, we would like to see a concept plan. I think as you had mentioned, just to, um, uh, just to identify exactly what's being constructed out there. Uh, the town does have what's called a complete street policy, which does, um, require the town to include pedestrian and bicycle accommodations for, uh, projects, whether they're municipal or privately sponsored. So we just want to make sure that that's, that's, um, been, been reviewed as well. Um, we would, we would advocate for turn lanes, um, as part of any traffic signal installation. Uh, we would want a vehicle to have a, um. Uh, green light and try to turn left, but can't because of the opposing traffic coming from, um, Mendon, um, and then tying up the traffic, uh, behind them. So we would, we would, um, again, advocate for some additional geometric improvements at that location, um, in addition to the traffic signal installation. With regards to the best buy driveway, um, and some of the activity, we did notice, um, trucks staging on depot street, I think it was last Wednesday. And I don't know, we, you know, from our, I don't know if that was just a one-off, um, one-time occurrence or if that's a regular basis, but we did note it in our, our memo. Because we want to make sure that this project does not have that same impact on depot street. Um, it does, you know, obviously it takes up an entire lane and, um, it does cause a bit of conflict down there. Um, so we would recommend that they, you know, circulation plan, um, that does accommodate the incoming, uh, truck traffic. Whether the, the, the length of the driveway or where the gatehouse needs to be or, uh, how that's, how that's, um, managed, uh, needs to be clear. So we also recommend, uh, just a monitoring program, um, you know, commitment to monitor the intersect, the, the, the site, um, such that if any. Uh, the town to be aware of any, um, any, um, excessive use of the site, um, you know, as, as, you know, grand opening. If there's, and as the building becomes occupied, if there's any, um, cause for concerns that the, the, the traffic's being generated much higher than what was anticipated by this study. Um, so again, those are the, the, the high-level com- comments that we had. I'm happy to take any comments from the board. Um, and I look forward to continuing our review of the project.
Thank you, sir. I have one question. I noticed in your report, um. You referenced it, you talked about island. You believe the applicant should post no island signs on his properties and that we may need to put some on the street, correct?
Uh, yes, I think that's, uh, you know, a customary thing to do around, um, you know, industrial-type uses. Um, I think it's appropriate.
Hope that applicant heard that. That's something we're, we're going to be looking for. I'm sure the names will be looking for. I'm sure the neighbors will be looking for. When would, how much more time do you need to fully give us a presentation?
Bill, I'm assuming that's towards the applicant, right? They, they needed time to vet Dan's, um, peer review.
And you, you got the comment about making this numbers increased based on what could be the worst case scenario and having that chart around.
Yeah, it's still, and the one thing just with a conceptual improvement plan. I know if the town was talking, they're gonna do an intersection area or redo the entire intersection. I think that's what Dan's talking about with turn lanes and.
I, I understand. I, I want to get, if I want Jim's input on that as well.
Gotcha.
Okay. Jim, let's talk about, um, the signaling. What's your feeling on the, the timeframe for the signals?
Yeah, I think, I think we do need to parse that out a little bit further. I, Dan makes a lot of good points about, uh, the geometry um, and opportunities to, uh, fully, um, improve that intersection. I think that's something that, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to look at the impacts of this project. As the board knows, uh, you know, the, the mitigation, uh, is a direct nexus of, um, of the impact. So, well, again, we'll just have to further vet the numbers and, and, uh, see where we, uh, come in terms of mitigation in total. Um, you know, we, we have some ongoing dialogue with DPW in terms of what could, uh, the intersection could look like. I know Dan's had a really long history with DPW and, and looking at Hartford Avenue corridor itself and and so I'm sure Dan could bring a lot of good insight to the table as well. So I, I think we do need to vet that a little bit further. I, uh, I appreciate the applicant's, um, willingness to, you know, put mitigation funds on the table. Um, so, you know, if it comes down to signals or no signals, we'll need to know when, um, or signals or signals now or signals later, I guess is more the question. We'll have to figure out exactly uh, how that, how that could work. We, we'll need to get the board a full understanding of what the timeframe could look like. And, um, you know, obviously the signals are predominantly for safety purposes, so we'll need to know how that would function with or without occupancy for this project specifically. So I think we got a little bit more, more to do in terms of vetting. Um, so, but I think between our peer review engineer, myself, DPW and, uh, the applicant, you know, we could certainly bring something back to the board for consideration.
Next question. Sure. Um, Dan, I was looking at your number nine, where you were talking about the cars. And one of the things that I didn't, one of the things I noticed was that sixty percent of the cars leaving the site are probably going to go south on Depot Street. What is that, what does that do for the analysis that needs to happen? Is that a concern, Dan?
Um. No, I'm just, I'm just trying to see what they actually projected for the trip distribution. Uh, I think it was fifty fifty, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, it was fifty fifty. So um, I think we just put a little bit more impact down at the Dairy Queen intersection, um, as opposed to the Grove Street, um, intersection. And that's why we, you know, we, we recommend that they do look at the, uh, North Main Street intersection, uh, consider some, you know, safety enhancements at that location.
Dan, one question from me. I know you looked at, um, North Main Street and Depot Street intersection. Have you taken into consideration the new traffic patterns going on in the center of town and how that will impact it, if at all?
Um, I'm not sure what the specific patterns that would relate to the distribution of traffic at.
Can you provide us an overview of what's going on in the center of town with the new traffic?
And I think, I think the applicant in its review, um, was aware of, of the improvements, but essentially uh, actually from this, uh, direction, from the Depot Street direction, there's not a ton of, uh, adjustments to that intersection. It's more of a, a through lane on the, I guess that would be the northern side. So the, the side, uh, coming from, um, I guess Franklin towards town into the town center, there would be a, an additional lane, uh, so widening to allow for through traffic. Um, but I, I think to Dan's point, I don't, I don't think it's, it would, um, really, uh, affect much of the, the, the traffic, um, the ways in which traffic is flowing through the center of town there.
Well, to do now is turn over the public. I want to remind you tonight, we hear about, um, traffic in the presentations tonight. Attorney Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, should I pose a question to you? So I, I was just.
Sure.
When the traffic study was performed.
You can ask me.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can you think first when the traffic study was actually performed? We've, we submitted and, uh, remember was the date? Remember was submitted, when was it actually conducted? Oh, we, we did over the summer. Okay, so during the pandemic, when there was absolutely virtually no traffic, no business operation at all, that's when you did the traffic study? I just want to be.
One second.
Okay.
We don't want to, you know. Yes.
The board, you, you had a traffic study that was done in the middle of the pandemic, where most businesses are closed. Traffic was at its probably historical lows at that time. We were just told, there was represented back and forth, and I think you, Mr. Chairman, asked a question and a couple of members of the board asked a question. We have the highest use and represented at least to this board. Yes, we had those numbers and went to peer review, but when I heard from the gentleman, Mr. Mills, he indicated that he only had the conservative numbers. So I, I like to know.
No, the conservative was the worst case.
Okay, well, I was confused because sometimes he said these were the conservative numbers and he didn't represent the worst case. He said those numbers virtually doubled.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and, and according to what Mr. Mills said, he said he would request a high impact or the highest use numbers in order to continue his analysis. Is, is that, is that what I heard? That's what I heard.
Mr. Mills, it is not a correct assumption.
So the issue here is that the, the, the presentation this evening by the applicant did not, the, on the boards there, they did not include the highest, most conservative generation. What the, what the report did and what the applicant did was they did test the mitigation at, uh, Grove Street to see whether that was, that was sufficient. And from a level of service perspective, um, it was a level service B overall for the intersection. So their conclusion was that it, it did improve the, the operation.
And we, we have asked if those numbers were made available.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just wanted, because there was some, you, I think you tried to clarify it a little bit.
I, I did.
Yeah, and I, and I was a bit confused even after that clarification. So I just wanted to ask that clarification. Thank you very much. The, the other point I had was this, we're talking about traffic, but I mean, at this point in time, I don't have to come up with an estimate or guess of it as to what the traffic light, what impact it would have. I've lived there, so, and I have a business on that road, so I know that what you're gonna probably do, you've already got the traffic without a traffic light, going back to the concrete one. At times at the high, at the high volume periods of time of traffic. If you put a traffic light there, gentlemen and ladies, you're gonna push the traffic back almost to the stop sign at the mobile station. I mean, how much, how much volume are you gonna put on Hartford Avenue? Because you can do it with free from review or scrutiny from the DOT. You're gonna take the depot street traffic, you're gonna attempt the what you call mitigate. What we're gonna do is you're gonna mitigate and push the problem off on Hartford Avenue in Bellamy and create a problem for the adjacent streets coming in to enter Hartford Avenue from that street. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I think there's somebody that's very important that's missing from this meeting, and I think that's the police department. The reason I bring that up is because we've already heard this gentleman explain that he wasn't there during early morning hours when the neighbors, you, you've heard during multiple meetings. Where trucks park along the sidewalk, they use jack brakes, they don't shut off their lights, they, they use their air horns, they throw rubbish onto Depot Street. You had one gentleman provide a videotape where somebody was urinating in his dumpster that came out of one of the trucks. Their, their solution is, well, we've got a long drive. Well, the long driveway isn't encapsulated. The long driveway is going to be, uh, a vehicle for noise and for light and for nuisance to the adjacent and budding properties. Because we don't know who's gonna occupy the property. We don't know what the volume is gonna be. We don't know what the impact is gonna be. We don't know what the ordinary course of business is gonna be. So all those speculative numbers that are being put before the board in order to try to get the applicant. The gentleman doing the traffic study, I think you asked, Mr. Chair, does he do this nationally? Does he do this? I'm, I'm sure he does for developers. In this particular case, I'm here on behalf of the neighbors who live there, who've told this board time and time again that law enforcement is not coming down there to ensure, because the Dunkin' Donuts trucks, what they're doing is a violation. It should be ticketed. Law enforcement should come and have them removed from the, from the side of road.
You said the Dunkin' Donuts, the Best Buy?
It's Best Buy.
I just want, I just want to clarify.
Okay, Best Buy. But it is, my point is, my point is with respect to the trucks that are parked there, I think that is important that you already know you've got a problem on Depot Street. You've already got a problem with the congestion of the trucks that are already existing and that they're not being required by law enforcement or otherwise to comply with the obligations they have to make that roadway safe. So what I think is missing from this study is a couple of things. First of all, I think it's flawed because it's done during the pandemic. Secondly, and I think it needs to be redone and recalculated because I don't think it accurately reflects current traffic when the economy and the businesses are running at full levels as opposed to pandemic levels with limited employees, with limited individuals coming back and forth with limited trucks. So I think that that's one of the biggest problems that I see as I was listening to the gentleman make his presentation. It was gnawing at me. When exactly did you do this study? Were you two hours in the morning and two hours at night? And I think that's a major problem which is gonna impact these neighbors and the truck and the volume because you already have a problem on Depot Street which hasn't been addressed through law enforcement. Enforcement laws that presently exist. And I think this would just compound that problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick.
Certainly.
Uh, I just, based on Mr. Watson's comment, but also there's, there was a few mentions on, here online, and I just told him I would address it in, in general public. Um, I believe Sean Kelly is still present and Dan Mills is here. They could, uh, address this, but uh, in terms of the, the, the count, the, the actual count itself and, uh, during the pandemic, my understanding is, you know, there's an analysis done. It's not just straight a count of what's out there at that time. It was what's out there at that time. And then potentially, if you haven't done it already, uh, looking backwards a little bit to pre-pandemic and maybe even looking, uh, at this point where, you know, in, in reality, the traffic is getting pretty darn close to back to reality. Uh, so, uh, I guess the question is, Sean, was that done, uh, looking backwards slightly or, um, or, uh, will you be doing that?
No, we, we can certainly look at, again, Sean Kelly, so we can certainly look at historical data. I, I would point out that I believe, Dan, you can, like, think about more color. That as part of the peer review assessment, they actually did a spot count out there within the last couple of weeks and that the data you collected was, was consistent with what we collected. I, I believe I saw the peer review letter. But certainly we can, we can take a look at it. But I mean, this July of, of this year certainly isn't, uh, you know, pre, the, the height of the pandemic in terms of the impact of volumes. And this is only a handful of months ago. I mean, if it was, you know, over a year ago, I could, I consider this a concern, but, but July of this year, we typically weren't, you know, factoring volumes up significantly because we were coming out of the pandemic. Quite frankly, most of them had their vaccines, go back to work. I know, I, I didn't see any issue when I was vacation last July in terms of trying to find a hotel room, they're all pretty booked. So I think people were back normal. We can, you can certainly. We can certainly, um, look at that, but I believe your consultant already has, um, that was part count that verified our data. We certainly have no issue looking at how things are today and how that stacks up and what we've done.
I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think it's important also to note that, you know, it's not as though when we put this new signal in that we're at a level service D or E where if the volumes are off by three or four percent, that it's gonna, you know, cause catastrophic, we'll service F. We're level service D. There's, there's a lot of excess capacity there. So even if there was some slight variation to COVID. And again, this wasn't, you know, a year ago. This was, what, five months ago. Um, you know, four months ago, you know, we could certainly look at that, but this, but there's a lot of capacity in that signal once you put the light in. It's level service B, so handling minor fluctuations might have to, you know, the residual impacts of COVID at the end of last summer.
Attorney Watson, I'd like to address a couple of comments you made. The people on Depot Street. And we, we walked through their monument this Saturday. We've seen the videos. They asked us, um, about what, what happened with Dunkin' Donuts and Best Buy. This board was not hearing that. I just, you know, we, we, we cannot correct sins of the past. We made reference to, uh, the queuing on Depot Street. We've asked the applicant to have all their vehicles on site so they don't queue on Depot Street. So we, we are listening to the neighbors. We're trying to get as much traffic off of Depot Street as possible. You heard me now for at least two meetings, talk about the mess I grew up on. And I think that's something that, um, the police department is aware of. Uh, the neighbors are aware. And I, I believe we need to make somehow Best Buy aware of. That is not the purview of this board, however. Our board is to deal with the application in front of us. We are trying to, um, mitigate what we have there right now to the best of our ability.
Yes, sir. Do you mean, Mr. Chairman?
I'm going.
Just very briefly, I understand you weren't here because I was at the other meeting where you announced that you weren't here when Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts and whatnot were. Were you here or not?
We are.
And, and I believe that this board needs to take into consideration sins of past. So if there's a problem on Depot Street, you can't just dump and just put blinders on and say, well, you know what?
I'm not, it's not, I'm not putting blinders.
No, no.
That, that's insulting.
This is chairman, with all, with all due respect, all I'm saying is this, all I'm saying is, I'm talking about when you say your job as a board is to look at this applicant's application with respect to this, the particular development project. And that issue that was created by Best Buy. The issues that were created by the other industry factories, warehouses that are put there are not the preview of this board because they don't have any impact upon the law enforcement or the correction of those issues. I'm not saying you have the obligation to correct the issues. What I'm saying is, those issues need to be taken into account. When you're looking at this applicant's, uh, request to put further burdens on Depot Street. That's all I'm saying. So I'm not, I'm not, I think we're approaching this from a different perspective. And I think you may have taken what I said, uh, the wrong way because I'm not saying this board needs to correct something. What I'm saying is, this board needs to take into account, when you look at this trip generation summary, when you listen to the traffic study, you need to take into consideration not what was done from five to seven, from seven to nine and from five. But the neighbors that actually reside there, what their views of what is occurring on that street and what need to be addressed as part of the, of application process here. That's all I'm saying.
We've been doing that from the very first meeting.
I, I understand, Mr. Chairman. I'm just pointing it out that that's what my client's position is with respect to this particular development project. That's all.
We, we take it as from the very, very first meeting.
Dan, can I ask you a question? So I, I think that's a, it's a fair point that Attorney Watson agrees with regard to the impact this light might have on the traffic flow on one twenty-six. Is there, as part of this analysis and understanding of what that might do if we stop traffic in both directions at peak times? What that might, what impact that might have throughout that corridor?
Yeah, there's some indication that there'll be long queues along there. Um, you know, today it's generally fleet free flow, although during the PM peak hour, it backs up all the way from the signal and in Mendon, um, you know, you know, during the peak hour. Uh, but there are, you know, we would expect long queues, um, in the eastbound direction during the morning and in the westbound direction in the evening. Um, that's why we're, you know, we're, we strongly encourage that turn lanes, um, on Hartford Avenue introduced as part of, um, uh, improvements at that location.
Yeah, that's a holistic approach to that intersection, correct?
Correct.
That's a long-term approach, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But just a follow-up question, Dan. Do the signal, signals at that intersection, would they necessarily have to speak, be coordinated with the other lights that are along that corridor as well? And is that an additional cost or complexity? Or how is that analysis done?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think that distance is probably sufficient in the operation of the intersections on either side of the Depot Street. Signal would are different enough that they would not want to, you know, talk to each other, communicate, you know, coordinate with one another. The other aspect of it is the railroad crossing at that location. So there's some concern that you would want to certainly. Have the communication from the railroad crossing to the signal such that I can flush out traffic that queues over the tracks. When a train does this pass through that area.
I would be interested. And I don't know, Dan, if this is part of this project, but to understand what impact. Precisely this light would have. I know that it would mitigate the level of service on Depot. But what are we doing? Is it just an F? It's going to be an F? It's just more of an F for 126? And how do we quantify that impact?
So when you introduce a traffic like today, again, it's free flow, you know, generally free flow along Hartford Avenue. And now we're going to take some of the time that's on Hartford Avenue, stop the traffic and provide it to the side streets. So anytime you do that, you're going to incur delay on that, you know, that movement that used to be free flow. You know, you can allocate a certain amount of time to Hartford Avenue, but you know, the majority of time to Hartford Avenue. So to minimize that delay, and that's what, that's what the analysis is showing, that it's going to try to minimize. Or maximize the green time on Hartford Avenue so that it doesn't drop to a level of service that's unacceptable or too. But you have to stop traffic. It's, you know, if you put in a signal, it's going to stop traffic. You know, every cycle Hartford Avenue is going to stop traffic where it does not today.
Thank you.
Can I ask both consultants a question and then we'll get back to. I came in, left Boston and fourth there this afternoon. And drove, drove into the meeting. And I've noticed it for the past three or four years. There seems to be an epidemic of people. Ignoring yellow lights and running red lights. And I know there was supposed to be a lag built in to the timeframe between going from green to yellow. How do, do we have the capability to extend that lag time? To slow down and better manage and reduce the number of people running red lights? And one mile, there's three cars go through red lights downtown and from North Main Street to Center of Town. Is there anything we can do to? Are you saying the same thing? I saw the applicants. When the consultants sort of smiled when I said the epidemic are running red lights.
No, and really the concern you have is you don't want to have, you know, someone running the red light and the other one that's getting the green.
Correct. And that's why you do have the lag.
Typically, what they'll do is what we call the all red phase, where everyone gets a red for a couple of seconds. That way, people that. Gone to light and go from the red, they know before the green comes. You don't want to have a one second red where a couple of cars go through it. And another, the other person gets the green. So you try to extend the red to even more time. That way, the entire intersection gets flushed out.
Does the town have the ability to extend that red light?
Oh, sure. It's part of the design. You could have a three second all red. A lot of time it's based on the number of lanes you have to cross to make it through the traffic. So this is where it's just, you know, one lane in this direction now. Witness would have to be that much. You could certainly add more all red to make it safer.
If you just keep that in the back of your mind, especially at North Main Street. To reduce the chances of accidents happening in the future. To. Attorney Wozniak's comments. It's apparent that you're going to have another presentation in front of us with the numbers. Look at what could be the worst-case scenario. We can invite the safety officer to come at that point to that meeting to be in attendance. I think that's our reasonable request. Jim, can you facilitate that for us?
Absolutely. No, no problem.
All right, I'd like to go back to the public.
Yes.
And then Sarah will go over here.
Steve Boyett, 58 bucks on the road. First off, I wanted to mention that we did start an online petition. That we have over 250 signatures so far that are opposed to the warehouse proposal. We will get more. We haven't touched the public that's not on social media yet.
Okay.
So at some point, we'll get that information.
We appreciate that.
Just to let you know, it's a heightened sense of awareness now because we know what we're in for.
Okay.
We've seen it with Dunkin'. We've seen it with Best Buy. So we're very concerned about seeing it with a third. And with regard to the traffic, let me just reiterate this from last month. It's the volume of traffic that's already beyond reasonable. Where if you were adding more traffic onto something that we keep talking about mitigation. You can't mitigate the volume of traffic and move it more quickly unless you expand or add volume to the roads. If you're going to put a light up, you're going to trade one problem for another problem. And at some point, and I know you folks were not part of the board then. But at some point, someone got up and proposed Dunkin' Donuts to be not a problem. Now, we've had one person that moved off of Hartford Ave that I spoke to. She said when Dunkin' Donuts came in, came on, the traffic tripled. When Best Buy came on, it became unbearable. So now we're hearing that this third warehouse is going to be a spitting of a term. I'm sorry, I don't agree with that. If Dunkin' tripled it, Best Buy put it over the edge. Then what are we going to be dealing with? We can do all these numbers and analysis that you want. And let me just say this, with regard to the pandemic. We've had a supply chain issue for months now. That supply chain issue goes back to truck movement. There's not as many truck movements now because the supply chain is being hung up. And they're sitting off the coast of California and Florida in container ships. So we're not seeing the real numbers because once we get back to where the real numbers should be, then God knows what we're in for. So my point is, we're already at our limits. You know, why would we do something, to me, to approve something like this on Depot Street? With what we're dealing with now and you're hearing the outcry from the public, it's irresponsible to put another warehouse up there. Now, what I did want to address, and I don't know if this is the time and the place. But I did want to talk a little bit about the home values around our area. And how it impacts having warehouses in them. So if I may, just.
Briefly, sir.
Okay, cut me off.
Again, it's not.
I understand.
Technically, I know, I know you're trying to make the correlation, right? But if you could keep it brief, sir.
Okay, I'll go as quick as I can. So first off, I want to say that our home values, in large part, I would hope you would agree, are dictated by our infrastructure. The town's infrastructure, buildings, roads, what have you, all dictate our desirability or less than desirability of our town. And therefore, our home values. I don't think it's any secret that a warehouse that produces a lot of traffic, truck traffic. In an area where there are resident homeowners, where you can look this way and look this way and look this way and see homes. That creates noise and pollution does not do any good for our home values. It will knock them down. Now, I took a study, you know, from 2020 of 154 communities surrounding Boston. Bellingham being one of them. The one where Bellingham fell in 154 communities from top to bottom, we're in the bottom five. Bottom five, we're in the company of Rockton and Lynn and Lawrence. The year before, we were in the bottom 10. We figured we'd be able to go up. Instead, we went down. My point is, when you drive through different towns, you can see whether the town has character, whether it has heavily, you know, heavily. Commercial industrialized. We shouldn't be in the bottom five. And I'll submit to you that a lot of what's been done in this town, I think warehouses, does not contribute to the value of our homes. It takes away from it. And I'm just going to give you a few quick examples. You go to Menden, right? And you go see Imperial Chevrolet, all those retail stores. They're beautiful. They look beautiful. You go down 126 and you see the Bellingham marketplace. Looks like the Time Land of art. It's an eyesore. You go down to Forge Hill Park in Franklin. It's a beautiful industrial park. It's well set up. It's away from residential. It's double lanes. You don't have to mitigate anything. Because they've done it right. You go down Depot Street and it's willy-nilly. You've got homes and you've got massive warehouses. And now you've got the traffic to deal with along Hartford Ave and everything else. It's not set up that way. Well, you know, we're being used as far as I'm concerned. Try to get a warehouse like this in Hawkington or Holliston or Menden and see. They wouldn't get very far and the home value is reflected. Look at every single town that touches our town has home values of $100,000 or more, the average home value. I can move my house over the border and get $200,000. I'm just saying that my point is that the values of our homes are dictated in part and in large part. By boards like this. Our values are not in spite of what the decisions that are made to develop a town. It's because of those decisions. So in light of the traffic and all of that, we're looking at our home values too. You know, and let me just say this about mitigation. The mitigation thing drives me crazy. Because in my world, mitigation is you have a business proposal. You review it. You decide it's a good idea. You execute on it. Turns out to be a bad idea, you mitigate it. You know what we're doing now? We have to talk about mitigation in advance of an approval because we know it's going to be a problem. The best way to mitigate something that's going to be a problem in advance of it being done is not to do it. We're talking about mitigating something that hasn't even been done. To me, it just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. And developers do this. I get it. But when a developer has to go to a. In a butter and say, you know, we got an ugly building. Here's some money. Put up a fence. Thank you very much. Bye-bye. This is Jones. You gotta hear this awful noise. Get some nice, you know, triple with pain windows and maybe that'll help with the noise. Here's some money. Thank you for your school. Bye-bye. You know, if this was such a great proposal. Someone should be here to develop. Why isn't the developer here telling the townspeople why this is good for the town? Why? They're not here. They're talking about mitigation. They're talking to a butters to see how you can, we can pay them for their silence. And I, listen, I'm not saying that they can't do it, but that's how it's done. That should be a screaming red flag to you guys. You know, that, that has to be done to buy the silence with the support. It's a short-term support for a long-term pain that's going on. And I just want you to keep in mind the values of our home have everything to do with what you guys approve as, as a planning board. What goes up? You know, it's our first impressions. You know, we see, we hear. You ride through a town, you say, my wife and I ride through the town saying, geez, this is beautiful. But what a dunk. We do it all the time. But we do it here. And I've lived in Bellingham, just so you know. I moved in Bellingham in 1963 when I was in diapers. I worked in the fire department. My dad was a lieutenant. I have a lot of roots here. By the time I leave Bellingham, I'll probably be in diapers. But I can say this because I've lived here so long. The town, when you drive through it, has a lot of what the hell would you say? It really does. This is another, what the hell are you thinking? If we were talking about a big industrial park, totally get it. We're not. We're talking about, you know, we're talking about a piece of property in the midst of a residential area. And it's more than just taking a piece of property in a building, doing this and saying, yep, it meets all the criteria. It's the impact it has beyond that and the adverse impact it has beyond it and how far out it goes. And this goes way down Hartford Ave, right out to, excuse me, 495. And it also affects the people that are on and off, I mean, off of Hartford Ave. I mean, I took a drive around town and I went off some of these side streets, even on off-peak hours. And it's a pain in the ass to get onto Hartford Ave from some of these side streets, even on off-peak hours. So I just ask you to keep that in mind. This is not doing us any favors, you know? And I'll, and I'll say this one last thing. We're not unreasonable people. You know, have the developer go back to the drawing board. Bring something to the townspeople that we can support. Bring something that doesn't create traffic like this is going to create. Bring something that will create careers and good salaries. Instead of jobs, minimum paid jobs. We don't need minimum paid jobs around here anymore. There's plenty of minimum wage jobs. Bring some, bring some real business to town. The more warehouses you put up, the less likely you're going to attract some real business. That will prevent, that will present some real jobs and some real careers to us. We're just, we're taking, pardon my French, we're taking the town into the shitter. You know, when we start putting more and more of these warehouses in. So keep that in mind, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I remind you, we still have a pretty robust agenda.
I understand.
Okay.
Without going down a rabbit hole, and I appreciate your comments. And those are comments that this board and many other boards. And there's been a lot of discussion in town where Bellingham is in the throes of growing pains and dealing with. Outdated zoning that was passed in the 60s and 70s. When the town was very different and there was no prospective development and the town desperately wanted it. Hence, we have two power plants, one near your home. So I fully appreciate those comments, but I, but I understand this. And I go back to the comment that I made. The first meeting, I think, that we had. And I, I don't know, were you at the meeting last night, Tommy?
Not last night.
All right, so we, there was a zoning article put forth to change the zoning on Maple Street. To change industrial zone to suburban. It was a spirited debate and it was passed over. So if you were, you were there and other people, I assumed many of your neighbors would have been there and supported. Because that was one example of how this board is recognizing what you said and wants to deal with it. And things go to town meeting and die because people don't come to town meeting, you know? So. What I, what I need you to keep in mind, and it's not that anyone on this board disagrees, but you say we're actually completely in agreement. The planning board lives in a box. We're stuck with the zoning that's in place now. This is a byright industrial use, industrial zone. We can't just say, no, it's not, you know, I mean, it's, the impact of this particular project. With the current conditions that we find it in now is how we evaluate it. So. I agree with you, but understand that it's an industrial zone land. And that's a bigger issue that's outside of the control of this board as we sit here today. But it is certainly something that we have been advocating for. So understand to some degree, our hands are tied. Because of prior decisions and current decisions made at many towns, nobody comes to vote. So it would have been great for you to be there to express your concerns in support of the very thing that you were talking about. You missed an opportunity. So please come out and express yourself at the appropriate time.
Let me ask a question then. I understand it's an industrial zone piece of property. But, but doesn't the things that we talked about as far as the concerns of the residents, their nuisance values? Doesn't that come into play?
It absolutely does.
And then my other question is, you know, can't there be, you know. Limit on what type of industrial building goes on there? You know, there's different types of industrial buildings. You don't have to have an industrial building that has tractor-trailer traffic 24/7. You can have different, so that's my question to the board. And what I'm saying is from a town resident standpoint. We're not unreasonable. You know, we're not saying don't put something industrial on there. Put something that's not going to cause the problems that it's going to cause. That's not going to have the adverse effect on our home values. Because you're going to take a whole segment of population that's going to not be interested in homes in that area anymore.
I agree.
So I understand your hands are tied to some degree. So if you, I understand your hands are tied to some degree, but something's got to give, otherwise, you know, it's a self fulfilling prophecy that we keep making mistakes.
Exactly, and that's exactly why we needed you at the meeting.
When I can attend, I attend.
I understand, but, but it's not, we can't say applicant. Really like a music call here or some other use here. They come forward with, we want to use our land for this. We have to evaluate that. We wish it's different, believe me. I don't like warehouses. I don't like tractor trailers. The traffic up there is horrible. There's no debate, no debate on any of those things at all. But just please remember we are trying to do the best we can within a tiny little box that we operate. And it would really, I think, level expectations of what it is you're hoping to achieve if you fully understand where we can push and where we can pull, what levers we can.
And how do you educate me to help you?
It's not my job.
Well, let me, let me give you an example. I want to pick up on something you mentioned last night. Actually, two things. I know a gentleman over to my right was there. Are you aware last night, Mattell Warren? About the DPW voted on? Move the DPW to Pusson?
I knew that was a purchase. I knew it was a purchase, I wasn't sure what it was for. Yeah, I didn't know about that.
We had, that was, that was one of the items. The item to rezone Maple Street. And I'm getting trouble for saying this, I really don't care. Was ten on the item. At the time, the item was voted to pass over. There were approximately a hundred and twelve to a hundred and fifteen people in the room that chose to pass over. This board in Jim, we worked very hard over three years to listen to the people in town and try to rezone industrial to residential suburb. We thought we had accomplished that on Maple Street to reduce the traffic. Hundred and twelve, hundred and fifteen people voted to pass over. The next article, Article eleven, had eighty people in the room. So possibly, you know, thirty-five, thirty to forty people were there to vote for one issue and they left. And we keep hearing that, you know, how concerned they are about the town. And, you know, once they got their mission accomplished, to pass over, they went.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the request from the residents about, you know, kind of learning the process and the ins and outs. You know, I certainly had some really good conversation with some of the butters already, so I'm certainly happy to have a phone conversation, you know, set aside a half forty-five minutes to just run through. You know, what really this process truly is, what the board's role is. You know, just kind of just go over the ins and outs and set expectations and, you know, certainly happy to do that at any point.
Thank you. So, you know, we are listening, we are trying.
I know.
But we are in a box. It couldn't be described better. We were there on Saturday. And I think the traffic might have been going a little quicker than forty, forty-five miles an hour on Saturday. We did see the litter. It became apparent that it was approaching Best Buy. We did hear the rumbling of trucks going the railroad tracks. And after the very first meeting, we approached the DPW department. If you heard the last meeting, and there was a document in the public record, that they're trying to repay, regrade those railroad interceptions sometime by the end of the current fiscal year by June third. So this board has listened to everything you've said. And we are trying to do the best we can, but we're operating within a box. Part of the problem is, and you've lived here for a long time, the way the zoning matter and how people have not wanted to rezone certain areas. We have a scenic road, there was designated a scenic road with industrial in it. I mean, it goes back to when, you know, you were in diapers here. And, you know, we, we tried to correct it and the residents in town at town meetings don't want to correct. And that's all I will say in that. I believe someone over here had a question.
Eric Vanuol sixty-five from Bellingham. I'm not in a butter like you are, but I do own a business on Depot Street, we've been there for almost fifty years.
But thank you for that.
Yeah, well, I'm going to take my taxes away, it'd be great because I don't get a tax break like everybody else that comes into town, but that's a whole nother thing. I'd like to know in less than five years, who's going to pay to repay Depot Street with all the trucks? Because you're right, the railroad tracks are horrendous. So when you can say a truck can drive forty miles an hour down Depot Street. Now, most average people work, what, eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night, right? My hours, when I work since I own a small business, can extend from four o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock at night. So I'm sitting here right now watching my cameras because I have to go back to work, right? So when he goes down there and does a traffic study on Depot Street at seven AM or eight AM, don't forget, I've already been at work at five o'clock in the morning and watched Best Buy line up for an hour or two or three. Because they're there all of the night. When I'm there at one o'clock in the morning and I can hear trucks going fifty, sixty miles an hour across those railroad tracks and it shakes my building. Depot Street is built on sand. It has one of the largest stock refers in the area because everything flows down perfectly through the sand. The problem with Depot Street is with railroad tracks on either end, an eighteen-wheeler doing fifty, sixty miles an hour fully loaded at, what do they weigh, eighty thousand pounds? Or so fully loaded? I don't know. But they shake everything, everything. So if he's talking about fifty or sixty trucks, peak hours to peak hours, whatever, how many trucks can go through the center of town in peak hours? How many could fit at the set of lights? Two, if you're lucky, or stop on the intersection? So he's talking about going fifty down south, one twenty-six, how many can go through the center? It's not just Depot Street, it's going to be the center of Bellingham. Because I've been in that traffic in the morning, going to Franklin, and it stops at the center and goes all the way to Franklin. You know how long it takes to get to four ninety-five or Hartford Ave? There's no easy way. And it's not just the car traffic, it is the truck traffic. So you're going to sit there and tell me a twenty-four hour facility that can run trucks in and out, the truck drivers don't care. They will run fifty, sixty miles an hour. I've been behind them on one twenty-six going, wow, that's pretty good. In a thirty-five mile an hour zone, doing sixty miles an hour. I've been behind a Gorillac Farms truck on Lake Street, seventy miles an hour on Lake Street in a full eighteen wheeler. The only time he slowed down is when he got close to the end. It's like, really? But I understand, he's a, he's a prop, they're not a property owners, they're just litigating for somebody else that owns it. Everybody that owns a piece of land wants to do something with their land, especially now because of the booming economy. You can't get products, warehouses are great because they got a stockpile of stuff, but you can't get stuff. I don't know if they're actually right with their numbers for the traffic flow. Because if they're doing it from seven in the morning, what happens in the first three hours of the day? Because these guys don't line up at seven AM, they start at five, right? So how many trucks does he say? Fifty trucks per, in the morning rush hour? Right, fifty? Sixty trucks in the morning, sixty trucks at night, roughly? Daily. So you add that up to Best Buy, forget Dunkin' Donuts because they don't run that. It's Best Buy's the problem. But it's not just them. I own a small business, so maybe I might get one or two trucks every other day if I'm lucky. But it's what, seven or eight other businesses, you got the fence company then, they get trucks in and out. You have to add all this into the equation. I've been behind the trucks from Best Buy, Dunkin' Donuts, the fence company, and even some of the trucks that love me, trying to get out of Hartford Ave. I was sitting on the railroad tracks. How long is that from the railroad tracks to Hartford Ave? That's at ten o'clock in the morning. Alright, let's go in the middle of the night, eleven o'clock at night. I don't know how many trucks rolled down Depot Street and I can hear them. My building shakes, it's on sand. And they go over the railroad tracks, shakes. You can try to fix them all you want, but guaranteed within four years, it's gone.
But we are trying to fix.
No, 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 you're going, you're going to fix them because they just paid it, what, a year ago? A year ago. And I told them, when they, when the DPW came into my building, the town officials came into my building, Mike Soto was standing there. He goes, what was that? They're all in my front office, the whole floor shook. He thought it was my machine running. No, no, no. He turned around and saw three eighteen-wheeler's doing sixty miles an hour past my building. The trucks go over the railroad tracks and shakes everything. What does that do to the residents? What does it do to the center of town, Hartford Ave? It's going to be an issue. I know, I understand that. They want to sell their property and build a building because they want a business. They might want to look at it, like he said, he might want to look at a different avenue than a warehouse. It's industrial land, so that means he can do almost anything he wants with it.
Yes, but you, you heard the expression earlier, it's a building. They have the ability to build what they want.
Yes, because he owns the land.
Correct.
But then you have to be able to stop the twenty-four seven. It has to be open from here to here and done. I don't know if they want to sit there, would they want to move their families next to the house and have their children next to it and live there? No. Because, I mean, I live in South Bellingham, but, I mean, God, I live, I live on that road pretty much because my wife tells me all the time, that company is my house. I don't live in my house and sleep there, I sleep in my business. Because I have to work, I have a family support, I have people that work for me, they need jobs. So I try to do as much as I can for them. But it doesn't, I mean, I'm a little tiny pickup truck, I don't make any noise at eleven o'clock at night, right?
I agree.
So they need to change their policy from a certain time of the night to a certain time in the morning, no trucks. I don't care.
As we go down this process.
It will have to stop.
We're going to look at that.
Yeah, because, I mean, as far as I can turn, you could take every street in Bellingham and turn it to thirty miles an hour. And to your zoning board question about, last night I was at the meeting. Yeah, I can understand, I have friends that own the businesses that are on Maple Street to that one question, I'll make it really quick. There's, you can leave it industrial, take twenty-five to fifty feet around the whole entire quarter of Franklin, make that suburban. That means they can't cut a road to Franklin going over a suburban section for an industrial lane. You don't need the whole parcel, you just need a section of it.
We looked after that last night.
I just, that was my last.
But, but as you said, sir, people want to maximize their own problem.
Yes, I mean, I'm the same way. So to the residents over there, I'm sorry to say, but the property across from Best Buy, I own it.
Your trucks don't run us off the road.
What?
We see your trucks.
Yeah, I try to run you off the road all the time. I see you and I cut you off. I mean, I would like to really build my building. The problem is right before COVID, three point two million, fifty-five thousand square feet. I need more room, I am so out of room, I've been out of room for seven years, I can't. So we bought that land and asked us to build a small building, fifty-five thousand square feet. And all it was, was twenty-five for me and then two little tiny rentals, that was it. Maybe like for an electronic supply house, but no trucks, maybe one truck a week. That's, I don't want a lot of trucks in my companies. I like one or two here and there. But I can't now because since COVID, nobody can get any products, it went to six point seven. So I can't build it. I have to wait, like everybody else. But I understand that, I mean,
I think you'd be okay with.
One last comment, anyone?
I do. Hi, Casey Pettipahagerty at two twenty-six Depot Street. First off, I just want to ask, did you guys hear me say hi, Jerry, your site visit? I shouted hello because I could hear your voices across in the woods.
We saw you out in the yard.
Yeah, so you, you know we were there.
We know you, I know you were there. So now you know exactly how close this is going to be to my house.
Well aware. We walked down the high length of that building to let the impact on your problem.
Yeah, yeah. I mostly was going to stay on point with some actual, some questions about the traffic impact statement assessment. I tried to ask this when I had my phone call with the applicant and they didn't have the answers available. But maybe with it being someone else there, they might. How did you come to the number of one to two percent increase? Because anytime I put the amount of traffic you're saying you're going to have over the no build traffic for what it would be in twenty twenty-eight, I get like twenty percent, a twenty percent increase in traffic, not a one to two percent increase. And that's over the course of a twenty-four hour period. If I just look at the peak hours, I'm getting like forty percent increases. So I'm just curious as to how that amounts to a one to two percent increase in traffic. Because I, I'm, maybe I'm doing my math wrong, that's totally possible. But that's not really clear to me how those numbers are being gotten, how it's, how we're arriving at that number.
A favor, man? I don't know how you got your numbers. And I'm not, I'm not diminishing your numbers. Somehow, like you said, a phone call up between both parties?
Yeah, I did.
Can we try to specifically answer her questions a second time?
That one was generated by the comment made during the presentation earlier.
I understand.
The other thing that I'd asked, asked and they didn't, didn't really have, and I don't know if this would be something that would normally be included in a traffic impact statement, when they're going through so much residential, and I know the traffic impact statement. Is there a way to provide that data, even though it's not standards to include evenings and weekday and weekends? Because I'm home evening and weekends and I want to know how much of an impact it's going to have on me then specifically. Which is not something the traffic impact assessment really looks at. And those are the numbers that I have to work with. How do we assess what is going to be on the weekends and weeknights and off-peak hours? I think we've all seen the videos that's been posted of the school bus trying to get through the bus, the trucks at Best Buy. I just concerned that, you know, when we're all trying to do our normal daily stuff, what are we going to have to deal with? So those were numbers they didn't have for me.
I want you to research it and be able to address our answers for questions and have answers in the next meeting. As I said earlier, I think we need to have you update your charts. We're going into a neighborhood where people live. So peak hours, fine, may I agree with you, nights and weekends would be nice. I also think it was alluded to the fact that you're going to have X number of bays. You may not need all those bays operating once you open up and you plan to stagger this over time. I like that calculation and how you plan to, you're not going to have every bay working when you initially open. The impression you gave us that up previously.
So let me just take two things. If, if I could ask, if you asked us to get in contact, if following the same approach in the last hearing, if you could provide our contact information to Jim, finally we can get in touch with the caller, it'd be easier?
I think, I think Jim can coordinate that.
Yeah, we're happy to reach out, we can call again, rather than doing certified mail and setting up a time quicker. And then relative to your, your second question.
You, we had mentioned that you have a lot of bays. And at one point you mentioned you didn't anticipate using all those bays initially, that you're looking to build out over time for the uses of all those bays.
So I, I think relative to the days, it comes down to how, how the building's operating and when. I think what typically happens is they're not all used at once through the, through the normal course of the day or a week, they come at different times. But I don't, I don't know how you can project that now.
What I thought was, was mentioned, is you were talking about have, how many bays do you plan to have?
It's on the plan, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I thought it was between like sixty, eight and seventy-two.
I think it's thirty-six at one fifty-two Depot Street when I last counted.
It's thirty-six on that.
Okay. So what was, what's the total, it was around seventy-two. So right now you're looking at thirty-six? In this building. Will those all be operational in day one? Or you, do you plan to use them for future growth, is what I'm asking.
So I think in a perfect world, you'd love to sell the building and get a tenant that occupies the whole, the whole building. You just don't know if that's what's going to happen, sometimes you'll have a tenant that will come in and say, I want half of the building, I want the reorders or whatever it is. And then you have to market the remaining section afterwards. So I really don't have a way to answer that. Is it possible that the entire building's occupied? Absolutely, it is possible.
Okay.
Is it possible that someone might come in and start with half or three quarters, that's possible too.
Okay. All right. Um, any other comments, like last comment, good evening, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be very grateful.
Okay. You're right in my mind, sir.
This is the third meeting on this issue. And both you and Mr. Salisbury, at each of the three meetings, the phrases, we're in a box. We have to do this. Answer time. Well, how come the Holliston Planning Board, which had a similar situation, Popping Brook, the Popping Brook Project, an industrial area, an eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse, went before that planning board. And they didn't worry about being in a box. They voted after many meetings of air pollution, same issues, noise, traffic, trash. They were more interested in quality of life than they were about being in a box. They killed that project, okay? Since they killed it, the petitioner is coming back with an appeal, but they don't seem to be bothered by that. I wish you guys could eliminate the Holliston Planning Board, that's all I can say.
Ken, Ken, you're smart enough to know that Hollison has different zoning bylaws. You're smart enough to know that apples to apples aren't apples to oranges.
They have an industrial song, it's an industrial song.
Here's your miss.
We're not gonna go down this rabbit hole. We're not gonna go down this rabbit hole, but it's very different town, very different zoning regulation, very different situation. So it's not the planning we're choosing not to take action, we deal with what we have. So I I don't want to debate that point, but it's a very unfair, very unfair to say that we're somehow throwing our hands up.
No, I'm not implying that.
They expressly said that, Ken.
You did.
No, I'm saying that they gave quality of life a high priority. They said it would change the culture of the whole neighborhood, and they chose to side with the neighbors.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
I ask you a question, and I know this is um, kind of unusual. You were at the town meeting last night.
I wasn't.
You saw the effort this board put in.
I saw it.
To rezonate.
I saw it.
And you saw forty people leave.
I, listen, I was proud of my planning board last night. I was proud of my planning board last night, and I would have voted, I would have voted to make that suburban and and residential. These people that bought their houses here, let's say they bought on Depot Street, what's fun, let's say they bought it twenty-five, twenty-six years ago, whatever. It was zoned residential, okay? It was suburban residential. Now, uh, it was in nineteen ninety-seven when the third power plant, we got two already, one on Depot Street. The third power plant, Florida Power and Light was coming here. And they, they said to that selectmen board and the planning board, if we can get that area rezoned to industrial, then we'll give you eight million dollars for your new high school. That's called contract zoning and it's illegal, and that's why you don't have a third power plant, the second one on Depot Street, because it's an illegal movement. I'm just saying, when is quality, when are you gonna listen to your constituents? These people put you there, when are you gonna listen to them saying, we need to have quality of life in Bellingham, we're turning to the one big traffic side.
I I heard that.
Truck stop.
I heard that last night.
Yeah.
So we, we've been listening since the very beginning.
Man. The planning board back in nineteen ninety-seven okayed that third power plant, so did the zoning board. But they got big because of contract zoning, they should have been smart enough. But that's what happened back then, and I'm just saying, this is a quality of life issue. It isn't an issue of mitigation. He's right, mitigation is when something's negative and you're trying to make it a little positive. That's, I think guys do a good job, listen to these people, these are the people that put you in those seats.
Sounds like we are listening.
I hope so. I pray for those people, because I wouldn't trade my house for theirs, my area. How many of you on the board would trade places for these people? How many of you would, can I see a show of this, can I see a show of hands of how many of you would trade places for these people?
Sir, I like more.
May I remind you, we've got a full agenda.
Anything else?
You guys just made a choice, I'll be very, very fast.
You've heard me twice say. Go ahead.
I'll be very, very, I'll be super fast, I promise. All I gotta say is, we're talking about a drop, it's just another drop in the bucket, it's just another drop in the bucket, the bucket's full.
Okay.
So another drop in the bucket, the bucket will float.
Thank you. I think we need to, um.
We have a bigger day.
Yeah, we do. Jim, what do you think, um, you have a lot of homework to do. Uh, what is realistic to come back here, mind you, we're only having one meeting in um, December. Yeah, we got him on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Yeah, I think you're filling up pretty, pretty well already with December, um, and there is, you're right, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a lot of homework.
Sir, realistic.
Yeah, I think January thirteenth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, we're gonna have a robust agenda to review all this information. Listen to what the residents have told you, what we've articulated. And you know, I I think we need to, you know, look at some things. And again, bear in mind, we already have a full agenda, that we moved things already to um, the uh, own meeting in December, I think the thirteenth of January.
So the the thirtieth intent on that to talk the carryover for the additional traffic.
Additional traffic, yeah. And um, I I know some of the neighbors initially want this process set up, but you know, it it takes a while to go through. And we're not gonna, you know, try to appease people that may want to sell the house quicker. We we we're vetting this as best we can, and we're listening to you.
I'm sorry, I just have a question, I mean, you guys are definitely doing the best you can, but how come they get to keep coming back with the wrong numbers and keep calling us?
Because I've asked them to come back with more correct numbers.
Right, no, but how come you're just allowed to keep doing that, oh, now it's twenty-four hours, and now these aren't the right numbers?
It's shady, how come they can't keep doing this?
I don't understand.
You want to dress in?
Hold their feet to the fire.
Right, why, why, we all have tons of stuff to do, just as you guys, you guys work twice hard every day. And then you gotta sit here till literally all the numbers he just sat about and showed us the board was not even the right numbers, and it just wasted all of our time.
I I don't think they're wrong numbers, they're just different numbers, there's two sets of numbers.
And we want, we want the other set.
The other set of numbers are just in the report, not here, so we have the other set.
The bad ones.
Right.
Yeah, no, no, sir, no.
Not, not.
From your perspective, it may be, we want to look at the numbers in the report and present them to the town and here.
Why wasn't it done tonight?
I can't, I can't answer that.
Right, but they can, they know why.
I I I would say that the worst-case scenario numbers were included in their report, which was peer reviewed by the towns engineer.
Actually, it was, he said it wasn't. My understanding was that, because I asked the chair that very quietly, and he said that it worked.
Right, I think he looked at the sensitivity.
And I don't mean to interrupt.
We'll continue that. Yeah. At the next meeting. Yeah, that's fine, I just. We have a motion to floor to continue to January thirteenth.
At seven o'clock?
At seven o'clock on um, continuation of the traffic discussion. Um, Jimmy, anything else we'll need on the thirteenth in regards to um, the bus street?
Yeah, I think there will be some opportunities to expand that conversation from not just traffic, but I believe they're working on a sound study as well, so we can start diving into those impacts and and maybe even touch, depending on how long the conversation goes, maybe touch on a little bit of stormwater, but uh, uh, we'll see how how things progress over, over that time.
Motion of the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes in person. I encourage you to come back. Please enjoy your holidays, please, and you know, we we are, we are listening to you.
I know.
Stay, stay involved, as they are about signing the laws. Thank you.
I mean that.
Thank you.
Two moves like this.
Say something.
Pretty good?
Great.
Or you can contact them. Or three.
Like an email, Jim.
Steve, you're looking sharp.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you very much.
It's my prime time of night.
Thank you. Jim, can you give us an overview of um, why we're here this evening to talk about? I guess for right now, it's called Bellingham Shore, or it's basic plan, I think that may be changing soon.
Yeah, so uh, this evening, Steve O'Connell's present to discuss Bellingham Shores, as you guys are very aware, um, you you have vetted Bellingham Shores extremely thoroughly over the last three to four years with the previous developer. Since that time, a new developer has come along, Eastland, uh, who has purchased this site and this project with those decisions. Um, as you probably are aware, or remember, those decisions were very specific. Uh, we, you know, the board worked really hard in refining those uh, decisions and conditions uh, for, in large, for the specific developer and at hand. Um, with a new developer, uh, I've sat down with him multiple times uh, to discuss different conditions. And this is one that he would like to speak with the board about regarding maybe um, adjustments to this condition, this condition being the phasing plan. Um, again, we we were very specific as to how the the process would go for phasing. Um, and with this developer, they're looking at it a little bit differently, and so I've asked for him to come to the board to present. Um, right now, this evening, uh, what the request really is, is to review the phasing. If um, if you're in agreement that it is a minor change, uh, you certainly could make that motion to accept it as a minor change. If you believe that it's a very substantial change, uh, that would, that would require a hearing process, uh, which, you know, the that, the developer had to decide whether he wants to go through noticing a butters, opening a full public hearing and the, you know, noticing in the paper, et cetera. Um, and then the third option is if you think it may be a minor um, amendment, but you just need a little bit more information, certainly welcome to take it all in, continue the discussion to a later date. Um, and you know, I still have that opportunity to decide whether it's minor or major later on.
Okay, before we go any further, um, just to be transparent, although we're two um, smart looking, good-looking guys named O'Connell, why not?
I was looking forward to your introduction.
I just want to be very transparent. We'll let that go, okay? Call slot. Mr. O'Connell, please, George.
Good evening, thank you very much, uh, to see you all again. Uh, before I start, I'd like to introduce you to Logan Huffman and Chad Bodnar from Eastern Partners, they, they wanted to be here this evening. Um, you know, we know the the PTSD you may have from the permitting process, and uh, and the first thing we want to say is that that's not us. Um, you know, we're, we're here to 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 make a good impression on uh, you know, on the project with with this board and all departments. We've met with with Jim and department heads, we've done a lot of legwork getting to the point where we're at. Yes, there are some very extensive conditions in the permit, but by and large, you know, we intend and and expect to comply with all of them. This particular request for the phasing actually is is a pretty robust condition about the phasing, about the minimum number of house slots and maximum number. Uh, we comply with with all of that particular detail of that condition. Uh, where, what we're requesting this evening is um, essentially where we start and where where we sequence the project to where we end. And if, if I may, just kind of run you through that.
Sure.
Uh, I appreciate it.
By the way, gentlemen, welcome to town.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, I mean, if you want to say a little bit about Eastland, I mean, not to, you know, pat ourselves, you know, pat the back too much, but it's important to know, you know, the partnership you're, you're, you know, you're here.
I I guess um, Eastland, we've been in business for thirty-three years, scares me to say that. In Eastern Mass, something I learned to say, you know, not too many years ago. Um, you know, towns around, you know, that if anybody wants to check up on us, uh, Uxbridge, Milford, Upton, Raston, and so we've done a lot of work in the area. Uh, so I say, it spilled out at a town meeting a couple of years ago, today we live in the Google age. I mean, you can find out about us, you know, real quick, uh, who we are and what we do. Um, you know, we're hands-on, we've, I think, over eight hundred houses in Eastern Mass. Um, very proud of what we do, and I think the bottom line is, you know, we do everything to, you know, do what we say we're gonna do. Because again, that's who we are and uh, we live in the Google age, so if I can answer any questions.
I assume, um, you think Bellingham's a good candidate business?
Absolutely.
Especially for homes.
For homes, absolutely.
And you you live in surrounding, you've done businesses in surrounding towns.
Absolutely, I live in Upton.
Okay.
And uh, you might pick up on the Midwestern twang, I'm a semi, because I've been here since eighty-six.
Okay.
So um, it's, it's interesting, I don't want to waste everyone's time, but you know, we're a residential developer, but I feel your pain and what you're dealing with. And you know, with with, you know, the zoning and things like that, and and you know, we see, it's out of your hands, so much of it, zoning, zoning. And you know, people have a right to develop their property, and it's, it's just such a tough place, because you find yourself in a spot, like it or not, I used to say, when I came here in nineteen eighty-six, sent here by a uh, land, a national land developer, I reported back to the company in in Texas. You could lay down on four ninety-five at three o'clock in the afternoon, go to sleep.
If I'm not mistaken, it was concrete back then, correct?
Right. And it's, you know, you just see the way things change, and and you know, this growth is huge, and we were talking even about like, you know, so much of this is Hartford Ave. I mean, so much of Hartford Ave today was almost got nothing to do with Bellingham, it's everything west. And you know, we, we were in Hope Dale, um, right at the uh, one forty intersection, our offices for years. And it was interesting to try and find, you know, the ways around the traffic in the afternoon to get to the office and opposed to get out, you know, or, you know, in in different times of the day just because of it, so it's tough.
Well, again, welcome to town.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so what we're proposing with this modification is that the phase one commence at South Main Street. This, this, it was a main road, there's great visibility, there's already disturbance at that area with the stockpiles that the prior owner had placed. It was a main road. There's great visibility. There's already disturbance at that area with the stockpiles that the prior owner had placed there. And as part of Phase 1, the infrastructure will consist of Road A, Road B. And then because our sewer has to connect to Cross Street, our infrastructure for one end sewer will continue down Road B through the end of the cul-de-sac of Road D to Cross Street. It's nearly mirrored from the approved plans where the approved plans had the development starting here off Cross Street with the hall road and the infrastructure coming out to South Main. So the same essential infrastructure and roadways will be constructed, except what we like to do is we like to start building the houses here. And this will be Building Phase 1, Building Phase 2, Building Phase 3, Building Phase 4. And if you've noticed, we've added a third phase as opposed to the two phases originally approved. And the third phase consists of just really a connection of extension of Road A from where the Road B intersection ties into this end is Road B. So I'll just put the page and you can see this becomes Building Phase 5, 6, and 7. So just, you know, a quick little recap before I say a little bit more is, the building phases will continue here from left to right. And then 5, 6, and 7. But as we get into the second phase, we get into the second phase when there are residents living in Phases 1 and 2. Construction access comes off of Center Street, which was an approved construction access on the approved plan. So that has not changed. It's just the timing of that changes. This way, while residents are living in Building Phases 1 and 2, construction access occurs off of Center Street. Building Phase 3, 16 house in Building Phase 4. We have designated stockpile locations. So again, construction is happening away from residents in the maximum extent possible. Water and sewer are all connected. They're flowing, sewer's flowing out to Cross Street. Water is making connections to both. And then since Center Street is our construction access at that point, we're building and working our way out from Building Phase 5, 6, and 7, and then we're out. So as residents are occupying the development here, again, Building Phase 1, 2, 3, we're working, you know, not, not into mingling work with those residents, but we're out of there. Hall roads will not co-mingle with roads that are occupied by residents with driving and living and trying to enjoy their properties. So there aren't significant differences to what you approved. Again, just so much that the original approval started with the building development, house construction on this side.
So you want to ask us one doing backwards sort of?
Yeah, I mean backwards, but not in a bad way.
I understand.
Yeah.
You want to see it flip, flip it?
Exactly. Because, you know, one of the things that dawned on us too is, you know, is one of the, one of the points about the original approval, this Road A off of Cross Street being the first building phase. And also, you know, the development happening on that side. You're asking a lot, you know, trucks that would be building, working in that phase and residents living in that phase too. The South Main is the main street. Trucks and vehicles are already on South Main Street. And then they got to go on Center and they got to go on Cross. If we can keep them on South Main until we get to this construction, it's on Center. Really just keeps a separation of residents and construction activities.
Okay. How will you deal with traffic management on South Main Street during construction?
Well, the good news is that, you know, there's a lot of room here.
Okay.
This whole, this, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not completely surrounded by the dense residential that we see on Center and certainly on Cross. There's a big opening that's there now. If you may remember, there's kind of a little bit of a U driveway with decent curb cuts. Visibility pulling out of there in both directions is excellent. So I think really just having the elbow room at this entrance is critical. But again, once, once this infrastructure will go from South Main over to Cross Street, and then we're very quickly into Phase 2, and then this becomes a construction entrance on Center Street, which will be the same construction. Exactly. That's a good point. The, as a condition of approval, the signalized intersection at Center in South Main being performed by the prior developer. Have some disruption there in that construction phase, which we're told will be in the spring. So that signifies intersection, once it's operational, certainly help as anticipated. But by that time, we expect to be in the project, working on infrastructure, prepping for Phase 1 of the building chains. We had, we had meetings with department heads as part of pre-construction. Jim circulated our request to department heads, and I won't speak for you, Jim. If you had, you know, my understanding is that you had no objection from departments, which I think is important for the board to make a decision.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. Don DiMartino did provide some comments, but it was just relative to utility alignments, which I'm sure the developer will be working hand in hand with DPW on. And obviously DPW will be doing the inspections, but nothing in relation to traffic from department heads.
Jim, can I ask them a question? Would this change require them to alert the butters that they're starting on this side? Because remember the woman with the pool that got ruined from the last?
So, so this change, if determined now wouldn't require, you certainly can ask, you know, Mr. O'Connell and then the group to make a friendly visit. You know, we know how to reach her and she's, she's very polite. So I'm sure a courteous hello and just going over the plan with her, I'm sure would go a long way.
Yep, and that's something that we make, usually makes a practice of doing, you know, when we're going to be in their neighborhood and.
Yes, they're just like that square right there at the beginning.
Sure.
Heard their pool got ruined when they built the mound.
Interesting, okay.
The dust came and entered this pool. Remember that? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We didn't meet with the woman on Cross. We did, exactly. Yeah, we made contact with some key butters already, the woman on Cross Street, who the sewer's moving comes out next to her property. So, yeah, that's something that is surprise themselves.
So doing it this way isn't affecting your looping at all?
No, no, exactly. So as part of the Phase 1 infrastructure, we go right out to Cross Street with that water and sewer.
Yeah, that was kind of stipulation why the phases were put in place. Because coming the other way, they had to extend it because they couldn't, they needed that loop.
Yeah, sure.
This kind of eliminates that way. Yeah, I like this a lot better.
There was a detention basin up there though. Over on, there's the bigger one, but there's also one by the other. How does that affect, like, starting by the other side? I guess I have two questions. One is the, the original permit had lots of stipulations between going from one phase to the next phase. We're not planning on changing that.
No intention to change that. That's a percentage of occupancy before moving to that building.
Not at all. And the number of phases you're not asking to change.
Correct. There's seven building phases and we're still showing seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So from an infrastructure point of view, about having that detention basin up in Phase 1, the old Phase 1.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Helped to Phase 1 there and moving across. How is changing, starting the other direction with your major basin up high, how does that change what you're doing?
Yep, it's a good question, Phil, because we put thought into that when we proposed this phase. And so because this is the low point, really the low point in the whole project, the stormwater is collected and channeled there and piped there out to this main stormwater basin, that will be constructed in Phase 1. So stormwater will be collected there and allowed to be conveyed to that stormwater basin. This is just infrastructure, so it's really just a narrowship consisting of water and sewer. Once we get into more detailed development of that phase, that basin gets constructed in that phase. So that's. So Phase 1, all that water, if you flip that back over, all the green water going into the big detention basin up top.
Green.
Yep, green and all those in there. A good portion of this, which happens in Phase 2, comes back down to this basin, which we already built, well-established. And then as part of Phase 2 infrastructure and Phases 3 and 4 building, this is built. This is built before the building phases, but this is built as part of the Phase 2 infrastructure, which handles, again, the, you know, primarily this road and a little bit of Road A, so this yellow area. So then all of the stormwater infrastructure will be built at the time it's necessary to service the phase that it's collecting from. But that's something we put a lot of thought into preparing this request to.
I have a question. The second retention pond, was it the earth and clay? It was a new, new concept.
Yeah. Big one here. Clay core, yeah.
Yeah. Are you comfortable with that concept? Because it was bright, it was new to us when it was presented.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not as common as it used to be, but early in my career, we saw a lot of clay, clay liners, clay cores in stormwater basins. And, you know, luckily, clay is rarely available. And we retained a geotechnical engineer in accordance with the conditions. They've reviewed it and comfortable with it as well.
Do you have an option that would be better?
No, we're not looking.
Okay.
Looking for something different. We certainly could look at it if the board was asking us to, but, you know, Eastland knew what they were buying to build. You know, all this information was available as part of the due diligence prior to the purchase of the development. So there were no surprises.
And they appreciate the history on it, why we went through this entire process.
Yeah, yeah, we had, we had a very lengthy.
I'm trying to be polite.
Yes, and, you know, going back to Logan's comments, Ben has taken 6. It's a small world, so you kind of know names, get to know names and faces.
And you probably heard, you know, I grew up with Paul Beatty, and so, you know, we go back, you know, that far.
I, I knew the, I mean, I knew the developers well for 30 years.
Yeah.
We do things differently.
Earlier, I welcome you to town. I think people in town are going to be very happy that this has been solved.
Time will tell.
Well, we have great faith in you.
And but the old saying, you know, don't believe a word I say, but our goal, and again, for whatever it's worth, we want to be able to, and we can't. I mean, I lived in, that we built the Walden Woods community in Milford. And we did the Harmony development in Hope Dale. I forgot that. It was, I think for a while, they were calling us the mayor because it was 6% of the town.
Okay.
But the point being is, is we want to drive through the town. And when people's hands come up, it's a wave, not a rock.
Okay. You're right.
Save time. I lived in the community that we built. So how many developers could come in here and say, well, I live in the 150 lots of the vision that we did? So not, not too many can do, actually do that.
What's your timeframe?
We're looking at, what was June for the first phase of the Apex to get to town?
And how long do you think completion, I realize we're in a strange economy right now?
Three-ish years.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, one thing I can say, sorry to interrupt. You know, I've had clients over the years who, they'll hopscatch around and build where your customers want houses. That's not the way Eastland's going to build, what they're going to build, and they're going to work their way right through. And that really actually have been a very good streamlined process for easy for the customers. And they find that to be very successful.
You don't do a lot picking then. We go down, you shop a lot like in the Chris Street.
Yeah, we do small phases and only buy in that phase, unlike others not named, as we've been saying before.
Right.
We're not going to pick the best lot down in the cul-de-sac over here and then start 4,000 people over here with the middle lot.
Right.
What they name.
You don't clear cut either, except for when it's new, correct?
Yes, correct. Yes, we've, we've walked the site with Conservation Commission, well, Anne and Cliff yesterday morning, well, through this into the afternoon. The entire limited work has been flagged, staked by surveyor and flagged and prepped for link. Now, we've identified trees to save. We also flagged, we staked the erosion control barrier and the limited work. We also flagged the 30-foot internal buffer that was required, if you recall. So we could, we could, we could literally walk that 30-foot buffer and we hand-selected many trees to save. And we got Anne and Cliff's blessing to, you know, to commence that work, subject to, you know, phasing requests.
Is that in the center area as well, or was it just in?
Yeah, oh yeah, everywhere. Yeah, everywhere. Yeah, we mean like the center with the tree save area. Yeah, exactly. Unfortunately, there are a number of dead trees in that area, then we selectively cut it in Anne and Cliff's request. But, yeah, those stumps will remain, but yeah, the tree save area, trees behind houses that are on the lots. You know, where some of these lots have more, you know, more, more room than others. Unfortunately, you know, the nature of these open space developments is you get smaller lots and, you know, higher density, you get all this open space. So it can be difficult to save trees. But again, we went through that effort of staking that limited work and the 30-foot buffer, so we could literally walk it. It's unfortunate that there are a lot of trees that we look at and go, wow, that's a beautiful tree, and we look up and there's. If, if, if you walked, if you were to walk the site, you'd probably be as disappointed as we were to see the number of dead trees.
Is there a reason why there's, the trees are dying there?
Catpillars.
The cat?
Yeah, we included yesterday's walk a lot of caterpillars.
Same impact it had in certain parts of Worcester, four or five years ago?
It was Asian Longhorn Needle.
Okay.
This is more caterpillar.
Okay.
Yeah, we got really here the last, I think, three years, probably to this year, not as bad last year, this year wasn't bad at all. But before that, I didn't have a lead for my entire block for three years. And I said, I don't know if they're going to make it. But there's a lot of dead stuff up there. Every time we have a storm, you know, you're sad all over again.
That's right. Yeah. Just to make one more note, the building inspector in town, Tim.
Yes.
Has probably done 100 houses with them so far. And Steve, who's the assistant building inspector, I believe you've done probably about 30 houses with him in Upton. So if you need any type of references on the work that we do, those are your first call you're building department.
Okay.
Get the skinny on us real quick.
Tim has another, there's other towns though, Tim?
He has done some in the past, yeah.
So I am very happy that you purchased this project and Steve's always been a good partner with us. And going to, that, that's fantastic. And I, but my one hesitancy is more a function of my own lack of qualifications to sort of understand and vet this as thoroughly as we did the first go-around with the other applicant. And I do recognize that, that, that whole project was a function of who we were working with. But there were a lot of hours, hours spent really figuring out the right way to do this. I know there was some consideration of, well, we don't really want to, South Main Street's a crazy street, you know, let's try to stay away from that. So the thing that I'm struggling with is not anything to do with you or this I propose, but I'm sure it works fine. I just don't have, as we sit here today, the ability to say, all right, fine. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know what I don't know. And I, and I do remember the, literally the hours we spent going over that. So Jim, I don't know, like you, if you have any insight or thoughts about that or how we can deal with that?
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I mean, the board certainly did take a long look at this. And you're right, South Main Street is a busy road, and that was of concern for the board. You know, Center Street also a relatively busy road. The applicant does bring up. Um, the, the applicant does bring up a good point. At this point in, in the stage, it's a little bit different than when we were looking at it because the light is a reality. Um, they are, uh, finishing up the permitting process with DOT. So a light will actually be in place at Center and South Main, probably, probably, uh, I don't know, maybe late spring, hopefully. Um, and, um, so that, that's a little, that's just a new variable, I guess. Um, again, you know, reached out to the safety officer, no, no, no one's issued any concerns. Um, you know, obviously that one site with the old developer, there was an accident at that location. Um, but that's not to say it wouldn't happen elsewhere as well. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, Brian. Um, and uh, you know, it's, I think, I think, uh, whether it's South Main or Center Street, um, you know, maybe it's something where it's oak, it's um, it's a, something where the, the, the police will have to take a, a look at it as it progresses and whether or not, you know, detail will be necessary at some point.
So from your, some, from your review and sort of from the technical point of view, do you have any thing that stands out to you or just from a sort of a technical logistical point of view?
Right, yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's, I, I would say it's slightly different than what, than what was, uh, presented long ago. And that, you know, we're trying to get the turning movements off of South Main Street, uh, to an area where there's lower volumes, uh, to for all these vehicles to get onsite each and every day. Um, but again, I, I think the only new variable here is, is the light that will eventually be present. So uh, that would be certainly a benefit to the South Main Street access if, if that lined up time-wise. Um, ultimately, I, I would say it, it, it certainly is a, um, it, it could be a minor request. Um, I do like Liz's idea of, you know, notifying the immediate neighbors of this. Uh, cause again, the butters were pretty heavily involved. Um, and, and again, I think either way, whether it's South Main or, or back to the original, if, if this becomes a nuisance essentially, uh, with the daily trips, you know, uh, the, the applicant's gonna be required to have a detail onsite.
Was there a component of dirt moving into, with this project? I mean, there was a good, if I remember correctly, there was a lot of moving of dirt from one portion of the project to the other. We had a big pile in South Beach. And there's a big pile there now that they didn't get approval to the first time, right? So is there, is, is, is there a lot of movement of dirt, I guess? And now we're moving it to South Main Street as opposed to coming in, I think, Center Street? Or Cross. Or Cross Street.
Yeah, I mean, that, you, you bring up a good point, because, because again, we've been really diving in, you know, to the project. Uh, the earthwork in this first infrastructure phase is probably the least amount of earthwork in the whole project. You know, going back to the original approval, you know, and starting on this side, that's where a lot of fill was required. So having that fill required in the early stages of the project would have, would have, you know, increased the amount of import necessary early on in the project, you know, coming through the Center Street construction entrance. Um, so.
And that's why they had the hall, the hall road, correct?
That's why they, they had a hall road, exactly. So, you know, we've quantified this material, we've, you know, can't dig into the middle of it, but what, the, the parts that we've explored are on the perimeter. It looks like suitable, common fill. Um, so in addition to, you know, the, the select materials needed for the stormwater basin, the quantity of material sitting in those piles will be used in phase one. So it's very, it's more than convenient. It was thought out. The material that's in our way, uh, you know, at this road A entrance here, will be used as part of the stormwater basin construction and some of the work needed in this first infrastructure phase. So it gets the stockpile out of the way. It doesn't require import of extra material. That's, you know, that will be needed in a different part of phase one of the old plans. Um, and then less, you know, less work in phase one, which accomplishes the removal of those piles. So it's it's really, really an efficient activity that's gonna happen with this re, reconfigured phase.
Yeah, we tried to really go over the plans to see if there was like a smoking gun and why, why those particular areas were phased like that. And the only thing that I could possibly surmise, because we asked a lot of members of the, of the town and they, they couldn't remember. The only thing that I came with was possibly they wanted to start on the other side because it's actually cheaper for the developer to actually install the water and sewer on that particular size to get houses going first.
Sure.
It's costing us, it's costing us more money to do actually what we're proposing, but in, in the phasing and engineering wise and practicality, it actually works better on the long run, doing extra work and paying for upfront to do the site correctly as it should be.
I think that approach that you just mentioned was not the similar approach to someone who presented the board. Uh, I, I, and I apologize for stepping off on one. Jim, um, unless you mentioned you want to notify some of the butters?
The woman with the pool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm leaning, I, I think this may be minor. Uh, is it possible that, um, you could reach out to, um, do we know what a butters came besides that woman to some of the meetings?
Yeah, I honestly, I think, um, you know, if, I think the the developer could certainly, you know, just pull a simple, uh, hundred foot of butters list or something like that from the assessor's office and reach out to each and every one of them just to notify them, construction is about to begin soon and, and here's the plan, here's what we're looking to do and here's our contact information.
We could do that for urgencies. Yeah, we could CC you guys as well.
Yeah, I think maybe we do that, reach out to the, um, woman with the pool. Um, she'll be, I, she'll be. I'm sorry?
I would imagine she will know the people.
And she'll be thrilled.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I, I think what we could do, and I know you mentioned three options. I think the third option may be the best was to continue it. It'll be a quick meeting potentially. I think, Jim, we have room in the thirteenth for this?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, I think, uh, the board wants, we could certainly fit it in on the, uh, the December meeting if you wanted, uh, which is the December ninth meeting.
Yeah, and then, is that a number to you? Does that slow you down at all?
It does.
Well, we're anticipating clearing some trees very soon.
Yeah, we've got.
Just because we have all the pre-construction, but we could obviously reach out to our contingent upon approval or reaching out to all the butters, uh, talking to them first before cutting trees or, or CCing, um, town planner on any discussions if people have any concerns towards, or I, I don't know, just throwing some things out there.
Then the butters, hopefully by now, know that we have a new building in town. And I believe they're gonna be thrilled. Uh, I think they know, uh, construction's gonna start at some point. I don't think, um, I could be wrong, but I don't think they're, um, essence married to the phases. I think they knew why we did the phases. Uh, because of the, of the previous landowner. Um, I wouldn't not be opposed, if Jim correctly from wrong, to do a conditional minor, um, minor pending reaching out to the neighbors, because they know it's coming.
Yeah, if I could add to that too, Mr. Chairman. This road A and road B was part of the prior developer's infrastructure phase one. So this was gonna be the hall road to the stockpile.
Okay.
That was gonna be really in this area of activity anyway. The only thing different was that the, the building days of the houses didn't change. Good point. So you would see that, they would see that construction activity.
Even, even when they're prepared.
That's right.
So, um,
Mr. Chairman, you certainly could, uh, make a motion to, uh, deem the, the proposal minor modification with a condition that, uh, all butters within a hundred feet of the South Main Street entrance, uh, are notified prior to any disturbance of land.
The move. Second that.
Um, there's a motion on the floor to make this, um, a minor change with conditions. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all.
Best of luck.
For it to be.
We're, we're thrilled to have.
Welcome to town.
I'm thrilled to have you here. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
And, um,
You wanna take over forty B bits?
I should, um, don't, don't answer that. You, you will hear that.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you have a voice here. You always give advice.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul, thank you.
Thank you. See you soon.
I think the next item on our agenda, and I apologize for the length of the meeting, is a pool of minutes. We all had a chance to review the last meeting minutes. Entertained a motion. Approve the minutes. All in favor of the motion forward to, um, approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose for motion passing unanimously.
One last.
We have a chance to look at the, um, dates for, uh, twenty twenty-two. And just want to remind you, we're only having one meet, um, one meeting in this.
And then, well, we're gonna stick with the same just to one in July and one in August?
Yes. And maybe we can, yeah, we'll change based on activity.
Sounds good.
Any questions on the dates? Uh, February, I might not be there. But I missed one since we've been on board. All right.
Bust a remote.
Okay. Anything else? Brian, name's yours. Do I have a second? I joined me, you mean?
Yeah.
Do you, um, all in favor of a chairman, please, if I'm staying on?
Aye.
Close, motion passing unanimously. I can't thank you enough for staying late. I, I know.